Are we ready?
Fire away.
All the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome now to the meeting. Please have your cell phones. We'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Hadcock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Got a motion to approve the agenda in a second. Just a reminder, at the end of today, we will recess until tomorrow, continue on receiving department requests tomorrow, and then hopefully adjourn at the end of the day tomorrow. All those affecting the motion indicators saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Cindy Muller, you're up.
Maybe you were gonna let somebody else do it. Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I believe you guys all have a copy of my memo in which, based on the numbers that the departments turned in, and I did not include any of the FTEs, we would be looking at a 19.88% reserve in our unassigned fund balance at the end of '23. We are down a little bit on new revenue that supports our county consolidated, which does our general fund, accumulated building fund, and fair fund. CPI did go up, but our growth went down. So that's why we're down a little bit from where we were last year. Does anyone have any questions on the memo or the new revenue as far as tax support goes? And I know you all have a summary of the actual budget.
Cindy, when you say growth went down, you're just in comparison to last year? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we were over about 3%, I believe, last year. I'd have to go back and look for sure, but with the TIFs as they're developing, we don't get to claim any growth on that. So the more TIFs that come about, until they start dissolving, then we're not going to realize that growth. So I believe that's why we saw that decrease in growth this year.
So do you have an idea of how many TIFs are out there? I know there's quite a few, but some that are going to mature.
I know that there is one that is going to be dissolving in the city, but I don't know what the value on that is. Hopefully, by the time we are setting levies, there'll be two, because they've given me a kind of a heads up that they might have another one that's going to be coming down the pipe, which in the end, that will just reduce the levy, because we'll have more taxable value to spread it upon. By then, we'll probably have budget approved, so it won't affect budget as far as the tax dollars that we could claim for growth, but it will as far as the levy goes.
Okay.
Hopefully, to cross our fingers. Overall, oops, I was gonna try and get to the... That's revenue, sorry. I should have clipped these together, and I didn't. Overall, our total county budget is down, but that has to do with highway. They don't have as many big projects scheduled or budgeted for next year, so that's where you're seeing the overall decrease. General fund is up just a little over 6%. Unorg road is unsupported with revenue. That's up a little bit, anticipating revenues to be up a little bit on that one. See a little bit of an increase in the fair, which is always, or not the fair, the library, which is always increased by CPI. So that's where that 3% comes from.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Oster.
I have a question. Can you explain the difference of the 5% cash applied versus the 10% cash applied, so I understand that better?
The difference between, oh, the difference between cash applied and what we're actually, or the 5%? That 5% is what we have to levy over and above the budget. That's per law, 72118. And then the cash applied is what we would need from our reserves, basically, to support this budget.
So we need, what do we, so we need a minimum 5%?
We have to do the, at least the 5%. We have to do 5%. We have to levy 5% more than the budget.
And we did that last year. Was our number of 5% last year?
We always have to do that 5% factor.
Maybe I might ask, did we only do 5%? Or did we do like 7%, 10%?
I don't recall what we did last year.
Okay.
I can, I can look at that.
The only reason why I'm asking is because when you wrote in here, it says the budget prepared, with the budget as prepared, the current one, I'm reading it, is showing a 10%. Is that, is that what I'm reading correctly? Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Hadcock.
So how much has our budget increased overall? Have you figured out that total?
That is in your budget summary.
Okay.
So the overall budget countywide actually went down 2.7 million.
But down 2.7?
Yep, yep. But general fund, and like I said, that's mainly because of road and bridge. But the general fund went up 4.6.
Okay, that's what I was looking at, is the general, and that's what I have, it's at 4.6. Just making sure I had the right number.
Yep.
And then total amount of growth was 2.3 last year, and then we take fire, library, unorganized, they went up 100,000 on total of them, so. Do we have, I asked Holly this, do we have any idea, thank you Joan, what, how we're doing for our budget this year because of inflation and how each department is handling that? I mean, have we?
Mid-year, it's really hard to look at the budget, because we look at the whole 12 months. And departments are very, I think they're careful with what they're doing, especially the first, well, probably three quarters of the year, to, you know, save off some of those big purchases in case they have an emergency or something broke down or whatever, that they still have them. And so you'll see an increase in the amount of money that's spent from budgets the last three months of the year.
Okay.
So it's really hard to give you, I can go in and I can do six months and say, here's where we're at, but that doesn't really give you an overall picture for the year.
I just didn't know if we were going to increase a lot. I know we're at 800 or a million difference from when we last added some of the other issues, when we added FTEs and other stuff, and wages. So just wondering at the end of year, how much that's going to affect the overall total for what's happening for this year?
Individual departments might have a better idea of what they're seeing as far as supplies and those sorts of things, equipment, if they've purchased that.
Okay. Maybe when the department heads come up, if you're here today, and I'll ask tomorrow, ask, would you tell us how you're doing for your budgets for this year because of inflation? It's, it's going to make a difference for the end of year totals. So I know even on Joe's with all the gas and everything for his totals, that's, that's a lot of increase. So, thank you, Ms. Cindy.
No more questions, Cindy? You can move forward, is your budget?
So the first budget that I did is our election budget. And as I explained, I...
How you doing?
Election always goes down, you know, in the odd years, because we don't have the...
Ms. Cindy, could you tell us what paper you're looking at?
I'm looking at my memo.
Still on the first page?
No, the one that explains my budgets, that election budget, auditor budget.
Oh, we're on your budget.
Yes.
Seriously, I thought he meant in general. Cindy, I don't have a memo for you in your individual.
Oh.
You can get that, sorry.
Well, that was nice of me to send you that as well. Okay, well, I'll just kind of explain it. I don't have a lot on here, anyway.
They have your auditor budget first.
Okay. It's pretty basic. I did, when I prepared the auditor budget, of course, put everybody on the new scale where they needed to be with the steps. So there is an increase in the salary line items. I also have a long-term employee that is leaving next year, so there's a payout within that. You'll see the increase is 62,000. So there's about 41,000 is payout on her when she retires. And then operations are down, because we don't have the two elections next year. That's the election budget. Does anyone have any questions on that?
So, so the retirement won't take place until the start of '23?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, in March.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I should add that on the election budget, actually on both of my budgets, I may need to overhire at some point during the year, because I do have Laurie's leaving in March. And then in the auditor budget, Laurie also will be also leaving my office next year.
Okay.
So if there's no questions on that, do you have the auditor budget next?
Yep.
I've even got those confused and missed like both. Wow, auditor has her budget together for sure today. I missed. The auditor budget is, is the same. I do have an employee that's leaving, so I do have her payout in there. And I might need to overhire. The operations, you'll see an increase in fees for software maintenance fees are going up, of course, next year, so that's the reason for the increase on the, on the fees on that one. The unorg road fund budget is, it's all supported by revenues. Those all get transferred to the road and bridge fund. So there's, really, it's, it's money in and money out, so the budget and revenue both balance out, but it's all transferred to road and bridge.
What's page one?
I guess I'm not sure what you guys have for that in your packets.
Holly, she's talking about the unorganized road.
Maybe printed.
What's that? She was talking about the unorganized road. I don't see, I see the healthcare trust, and I see...
Auditor elections, then they have domestic abuse, and then they have healthcare trust under yours.
Okay. I skipped the unorg road, I guess, because it's supported by revenue completely. So I did not give you that one. Wow. We can move on to the domestic abuse budget, and I'll get you a copy of the unorg road, so that you have it in your packet. Domestic abuse, there again, it's, it's money in, money out. So all of the revenue that we collect currently goes, it's the 229.
229? Travis is saying he doesn't have his. I wonder if it got missed in the copy? I don't have, I guess I'm not following.
Do I need to just stop and let everybody else go? And I'll go back upstairs and look at what, what I have?
Because I put the entire packet in the copy machine, and I wonder if it just missed that page? I'll go make copies, so they have it. But if you wanted to talk about healthcare trust, that's the long sheet that they have.
Okay. And you do have healthcare trust. Do they have accumulated building?
They... Nope. That's it's under buildings and grounds.
I've only got three pages. The three that I had was the healthcare trust, the general fund for auditor, and then elections 120. So auditor 141, elections 120, and self-insurance plan 168.
Put accumulated building and buildings and grounds.
Oh, okay.
Where that spreadsheet is for them.
I do want to talk about that, just because of my portion for accumulated building is bond payments.
Is what?
Bond payments.
Okay.
And they have a tab called bonds.
Yep. We got a one-page sheet on that.
Okay.
We're doing healthcare trust.
So yes, if we move on to healthcare.
Separate under bonds. There's a tab called bonds.
Yeah, but we're doing healthcare trust right now?
Yeah, we can do...
Whichever one you prefer to talk about first.
Okay, healthcare trust, that's fine.
Okay. So healthcare trust is always kind of a tricky one, because we don't know who's going to come on and who's going to go off, and who's going to take family. And it is supported by revenue, and I know the healthcare trust board did make a motion for the purposes of budgeting for a 3% increase, so all of the departments should have followed suit with that and budgeted an extra 3% on the county's side for the expenditures. We did get, HR got a notice from Delta Dental, and we will have a 5% increase on dental rate, too. That's nowhere in this budget, and I'm sure nobody, no departments knew about that at the time we were preparing budget, so that's not in there. I think it comes to probably about 22,000, 23,000 overall, as an expense to the county.
Cindy, so how many employees are we down? Anybody know? What I'm saying that is because if we hire, are we down 10, are we down 30? What's that going to do to the healthcare trust fund? And are prepared, if we hire, and a lot of those people that were down end up wanting healthcare and stuff, are we prepared for that, depending on, I know Joe was down like, what, six or so, and that's going to increase this a whole lot, depending on how many FTEs were down, right?
I can answer that. I think each department plans their health insurance. They have an idea of what, what they have when they budget that. That's why you'll see in unexpendited funds, if it's not, then they, they return it at the end of the year.
So bottom line is, for FTEs, that they're down, they prepare that maybe some of them will do healthcare, or they prepare that they do or don't. I guess, I never really asked them before, that they just automatically do like three out of six, or how do they figure that out, then?
I usually don't have a lot of new FTEs, but I usually, if I do have an open position, I'll, I'll budget employee plus one. So I'm not doing signal, and I'm not doing family, just as an estimate, but to at least have a placeholder in there for some insurance.
I appreciate that. I just, that just came to mind on this, just, just because we are so many down.
Resume the specific questions, and the healthcare trust will go towards John, towards HR.
Yeah, should actually let John do that budget.
Yeah.
He's involved in all of, all of those discussions.
Quite frankly, when I first looked at it, I thought that's where it probably would be, but it's not.
Not been. Any more questions on the healthcare trust?
My, I just got a comment on it, and that was, I think healthcare trust board's been pretty diligent about keeping the rates as low as they could, but it, we hit a breaking point, and we had to up it.
And a 3% increase is, is a pretty small increase.
Yes. I just wanted to pass that on, so, but there had been several years without it.
Yeah.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Haven't we had to subsid, how many times in the last few years, last three years, have we had to subsidize it, and by how much?
I believe last year is the only year that we did a transfer from.
Yeah.
Because I remember we, we had a year, and it was last year that we subsidized.
That we transferred money.
I think it was about 400,000 that we transferred.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Lloyd, you're on that board?
Well, I was.
Travis.
Yeah. Oh, you're not the other, you're not the alternative?
You, too.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Yeah, okay. So Travis, is there bad discussion on rates there, or is that the first of the year?
Last meeting I was at, we, the one, I think for this week or last week, is canceled. We, there's another one coming up after that, but there has been some discussion on it, nothing affirmative that I remember. The last meeting I was at, I know there was some research looking into some of those. But I think last year, we, even though we supplemented, we didn't supplement, we supplemented to make sure we were at the amount in the reserve to have a good rating. I don't think it was because we needed it to pay out any of the bills. Do you remember?
I think it was just to support that fund.
It was to keep us at a certain level, so that we had the right rating, rather than, it wasn't because we needed 400,000 to pay out.
Build up first.
I didn't see, yeah, there you go. That's probably the reason.
It's here.
Want us to build up our reserves?
Yeah, it was making sure we built it up.
I need a needle back there.
Good morning, Commissioners, John, moral Pennington County HR. So the 400,000 dollars was to replace money that was spent from the trust unexpectedly due to COVID. So it was to help us get the trust fund back up to a reasonable balance, because we experienced a little over 400,000 dollars in unexpected expenses just due to that disease, not to other claims, but, yeah. So it's the one time that I'm aware of since I've been here. I've been here four years, and that was the only time we've done it.
Okay. So Cindy, do we take that 400,000 out of the COVID dollars we have then, or?
It came out of the general fund, from, from the reimbursement money that we had received.
Any other questions on that? So now you want to go to bonds?
Go to bonds. I'm gonna just pass out a sheet here. Just, I'll just put some information for everybody.
Thank you.
This just shows our total debt as a corporate unattended one. And...
All right.
Shows, you'll see the... Decrease in the, the total annual payment as some of these bonds are paid off. I didn't print a list of each individual bond, but this is the total of all of our bonds, so we have 52,400,000 in outstanding debt right now with our bonds. So between the, the bond payments and then the service fees that they collect on those, our overall bond expenditures are, are going down to $2,000, $2,500 for this next year. But I did want to make sure that I touched on that and gave you the information on all of the, the debt service that we have. And if you'd like to see a list of the individual bonds and when they're going to be paid off, I can get you that as well. This just gives you an idea of our overall debt.
So there must be one of them that's going to be paid off at the end of next year.
Yep, there is. Actually, I think there's two of them that might be coming up at the end of next year.
So then explain to me, on the, when we go down to 1231 and 2036, the difference between 36 and 37? What is that, a adjustment?
It, it has to do with how they schedule the payments out when they finance those bonds.
Okay.
So that's why there's a difference there. Whoever is doing the budget at that time might want to take a look at that and keep that bond payment up a little bit. But by then, we'll probably have a lot more, so it might not make any difference at all.
Okay.
And the last one we have is domestic abuse. Is that the one you're looking at? Okay. And that, that is all supported on revenues as well, divorce filings, marriage filings, domestic abuse fees and fines. And so everything that comes into that domestic abuse fund gets paid out currently to Wavy.
Isn't that kind of a matching fund with the city and county?
I don't know what the city does for them.
Deb, do you remember?
What?
Do you remember funding for Wavy? I think it's underneath the police department's budget. They put money in the Wavy also. But it was tr, I think it is kind of like city-county joint effort for Wavy, domestic violence.
It comes out of Mark Vargo's budget.
Yeah, but I mean, I think the city also does it. It's kind of like a matching, I don't, I wouldn't say matching, but we're partners in it.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any formal agreement with the county.
No.
Okay, okay. But anything that is collected on those revenues has to go in the domestic abuse fund and is spent out of there. Any more questions?
Anything, anything else for Cindy?
I'm sure there will be. After we're done with all of the hearings, I will make sure I have my laptop with me tomorrow, so we can start looking at the different scenarios.
There we go. Thank you. Next one up is Barry Teis. Morning, Barry.
Morning, Barry Teis, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services and the Veterans Service Office. Just a few things to highlight, not a lot of major changes, of course, the salary increase, minor salary increase. When it comes to economic assistance, I highlighted this for the 2023 budget, and Brenda Dolkey's actually with me today, who's the Economic Assistance Director, but a few things we're anticipating in 2023 is, with the federal funding and the folks who are now qualifying for federal funding, it's diminished substantially. As of this morning, we had 40 active applications during the height of the pandemic in 2021, and even earlier this year, we would have hundreds of applications open. So you couple that with the, I know Commissioner Hadcock mentioned inflation, and what we anticipate will be rent increases, continued rent increases across our community. We would anticipate higher requests for economic assistance, just because of the cost of services and goods and everything else. So it's been a number of years since we, and I'll come back to the board later this year to talk about this potential for rent increases, but to prepare for 2023, should you approve that down the road, we thought it was a good time to adjust the amount of rent assistance we provide, just because when somebody comes into our office, there was a time where one individual would come in, and the most they qualify for is $190, which made more sense five years ago, 10 years ago, $190 now, when, you know, the average, oh, I was at a housing meeting last week, and I think they said the average rental rates for a one-bedroom unit are now $1,200 in Rapid City. And so this helps us adjust for the possible increase in economic requests and rent assistance, as well as the decline in the amount of individuals who would qualify for pandemic assistance. Beyond that, we're not, we're not requesting any additional FTEs. I believe everything else is fairly static within this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Barry, who establishes the rental assistance, the amounts?
You do, we proposed the amounts to you, um, it would have been twenty sixteen, I believe, I look back at Brenda, twenty sixteen was the first time in twenty-five years we came to the board and asked for increases to that just because of the slight rent increase and it was our plan to try to do this yearly and then with the pandemic and some other pieces, we didn't do anything with the rent increases over the past few years, so that's why we're feeling like now is a good time to look at that.
Sixteen was the last time it was adjusted?
Yep. And you can see, we went, and I use the one member because that's the one I can remember off the top of my head, it was at one ninety, we went to two forty. And again, in the next few months, we would look at the three hundred and sixty dollars, so takes a slight increase, we really offset the amount of Pennington County dollars used for individuals who come in with assistance by leveraging foundation money. You know, we partner with Western South Dakota Community Action Program. They provide us an opportunity to apply through their programs for individuals for assistance. And right now, we're working through a community development block grant. It's minimal assistance, but they all have different requirements, so some cases, we can use all those different pools of funding for individuals to get some closer to what they might need for past due rent, current rent. We've been fairly fortunate in our office to not see a ton of um evictions. People are not moving as frequently as they used to because, you know, there's a couple of variables with this, they understand that finding a new place to live is very difficult. And I also think that could be an adjustment in some people's um behavior, being good tenants, making sure they don't get evicted, so keeping up on rent, of course, is one of those pieces. Maintaining the requirements within leases, and so I I feel like a lot of our customers and clients are really focused on not getting evicted and so when past due rent comes up, past due utilities, utility disconnects, they're figuring out how to get those covered.
Barry. This two forty for like one person, three hundred, what what I remember right, isn't there, they meet the requirements, Frank, I mean, you have to meet that requirement. Um, and then it's still considered kind of a loan, isn't it? So I I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I'll let you clarify that, I meant, the other comment I got, I think so why some of the numbers are down from what I'm seeing is uh getting a lot of help for down payments or deposits from the tribes and rent assistance from the tribes is has been pretty predominant this year. I mean, more than I've ever seen, so I'm I'm kind of shocked seeing that moving forward and maybe that's why you're not seeing as many, I mean, I'm getting, uh, Rosebud and Ogala both putting deposits down and three months' rent.
And that, you're correct on that because they received, um, and I would look back at Brenda on this, but I believe they received two uh grants for fifteen million dollars, the Ogallalasoo Tribe, in different periods of time, and so they're on that second.
Yeah.
It's my understanding it's that second uh round of funding. And so there's a local office, um, that has been assisting tribal members who are living outside the reservation, so within Rapid City. But to your point on, um, when it comes to the, I lost my train of thought on this, um, your your first question, the.
Paying it back.
Paying it back, thank you, the, so when it comes to liens, whenever Pennington County, we issue assistance using Pennington County dollars, so if it's rent assistance, utility assistance, individuals are required to pay us back, it's a really, uh, I describe it as a no-interest loan. If they don't start making payments within typically six months, um, it goes to collections, can go to collections, so we have individuals who have paid us back for years, a dollar a month, um, the liens used to be much higher because of the medical assistance, medication assistance, and then with Medicare Part D and the Affordable Care Act, those helped offset some of that. So, and this is going to sound weird, but I say this all the time, we work really hard at trying not to assist individuals with county dollars because then they're leaning for it, which means their debt. Uh, they have more debt to carry at the end of the day, so when we can offset county dollars, utilize foundation funds, utilize block grant funds, that at the end of the day helps our community members because there's not this large debt that's being incurred, and so the liens are a big, a big piece, and when it comes to this rent assistance and this chart you're looking at, individuals have to meet the um specific guidelines that are laid out when it comes to their amount of income, gross income they can have, so just because it says we'll would propose that we'd help somebody with three hundred and sixty dollars, they still have to fall within the rent guidelines. And it doesn't mean that with their amount of income that they'll qualify for the entire amount, it could be less, typically it is less than that, so it's really the tip of the iceberg when it comes to rent amounts now in our community. It's where we rely a ton or a lot on the John T. Vikurvich Foundation. Um, there's a proposal, and I'll be coming to you with that here at the end of the month, to submit an application for, I think this year we're going to do a hundred and twenty-five thousand through the Vikurvich Foundation, last year they provided us with a hundred thousand, year prior, eighty thousand, so a little more flexibility within that funding too, which helps us especially when it comes to deposits, because we can't provide deposit assistance through county dollars, so that's where we use the Vikurvich dollars.
Well, the reason why I ask that is is not downplay it or anything like that, because I I've referred people to you and and they've gotten the assistance, but it also builds their self-esteem up, they needed it at that point in time, but they did make make their payments and pay it back, because just they had a low point and that it, they don't, you know, they didn't, they just needed it, but they they felt better after the payback, so I mean, there's pros and cons to it, but.
Yeah, and life, life happens and I think we all experience that, so if it's car repairs, if it's childcare issues, um, if it's businesses adjusting their hours or their business model, those are all pieces that impact uh our our community members, so.
So the rental assistance is, this is maximum dollar amounts we're showing here, so do you have a idea of a percentage of how many get the maximum as compared to the overall?
Um, I don't off the top of my head, and I look back at Brenda's, because she's done this business for twenty-some years.
I would guess seventy-five percent.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Next one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Okay, now we have, uh, Eric, Public Defender.
Good morning, Eric Whitaker, Public Defender. The twenty twenty-three proposed budget, it's designed, you know, not over ninety percent of our budget is in our salaries.
I'm sorry, the percentage again?
Over ninety percent, it's about ninety-two percent, and about eight percent's in operations, and operations, we're able to reduce that a little bit. And as far as salaries, we're just asking for one unfunded F T E. Looking at the sort of the landscape and in hiring i- i- on in the attorney world right now, it's it's going to be a little tough here in the next couple of years, most likely. We are, um, I just got news, we have another employee who's going to be starting their own practice, so you know, currently we're down four attorneys, we've got some help coming to fill some of those, but we are, we we don't have any help on two of those, so we are in the market right now for two attorneys. And then I've had private conversations with four or five lawyers who opportunity is knocking in this environment, they're looking at options. And so they may leave us as well, or some of them might leave us, and there's always, of course, people who are looking that I don't know anything about, so um, I'm worried about the next uh year or two in recruiting and retention. Uh, mini ha-ha for state's attorneys as well as public defenders, they're starting at eighty-two thousand now. So that's our most direct competitor. So otherwise, the budget is largely uh similar to what it was last year. We also have our witness budget and um oftentimes we don't spend all that and, you know, we are very judicious about our our witness and expert budget for, but we just never know a year in advance what kind of cases we will be assigned, the seriousness of those cases, so we always just give that back to the taxpayers if we don't spend it, and I would say generally that's, you know, my philosophy as well. I budget to sort of what, if everything um I need has has to uh be spent in a given year, and hopefully that doesn't happen, I just give it back, so I don't spend it at the end if I if I have it, so.
So Eric, when you say currently down four, does that include the one that you just learned about or?
No, that's a different, so, no, he's he's going to be with us until August, and with, when I say we're down four, uh, we just had one of our employees became a magistrate judge, so that that position is is open. Um, we have uh another uh opening right now, but that's going to be filled in August with a law student. Um, we have a another position we've had open for a big part of the year, but we've got an employee coming in July. And we have an employee who we've had to reassign because they didn't pass the bar, taking again in January or in in July, hopefully we'll have a passage, in which case that would be filled. If that employee does not pass the bar, then we will have three openings, so.
And starting wage, Minnai County, you said it was eighty-two, it's sixty-seven here?
Sixty-seven here. So that, I'm I'm just asking for that, just to give, but I have frankly no, I I would love to be fully staffed, but I don't think that's going to happen next year, I mean, I really just, I think we'll probably be down two or three lawyers is is really what our reality is going to be, I think, I'm afraid Mark's going to likely be in the same position, so.
Okay.
Hello, Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
So isn't recruiting, um, H eight or Health and Humans, or Health and Human Services, jobs, uh, John's job? Um, I don't think individually, um, let alone you have some attorneys down that maybe could help you, could do some calls and stuff to recruit, because then we probably need a recu- recruiter in every department. Um, why would yours be different than any other department here?
So, um, well, lawyers are a little bit unique in that most law students find their employment in the fall of, starting their third year, so law school is a three-year program. In the fall, typically in September or October, every law school in the country has what they call on-campus interviews, where the best students frankly go and meet with the various employers and they, um, and you offer a position a year in advance for that, and so we have a new an- attorney starting in August that we went and recruited last year under the same program, because we've had a half-funded F T E for a very long time.
Who was we went and did it, so who?
Oh, that's me, that's me, yeah, I'm sorry, my office, sometimes, uh, I can't make it and 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 uh one of my, like, assistant director will go, for example, but usually it's me.
Okay.
What I think of a fully unfunded F T E will allow me to do is to make two offers, because I I I don't, I feel very comfortable with offering positions if we're close to full. Uh, I, and last year's the O C I's, on-campus interviews, we had three excellent candidates that wanted to come work for us. If I could have hired, if I had two coming in August, I'd feel much more comfortable up where I'm at.
You're saying you can't find the time to do that, so you can do it, I I guess I'm not not getting what you're saying.
No, I have the time to go to do, I I guess I'm not under, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
I I guess I'm not understanding the recruiter part, if you already do it and you just need it more full-time because of, I mean, that person all year is going to do recruiting?
No, 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 no.
No.
I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking.
I I am asking for an unfunded F T E to give me the flexibility to make two offers a year in advance, even though I I, does that make sense?
So it seems like.
He he he's not looking.
To get another one, he's gonna.
He's not, he's not looking at as a at a recruiter, per se.
He just wants another F T E, so he's.
An unfunded F T E.
Okay. Since I've been here, you've always been a couple down, I guess, and we keep adding and adding and adding, but it seems like some of the departments I'm seeing can't and even, um, keep that, keep track with the F Ts, meaning we we are not even filling the positions, but we need more. So to get ahead of it, when it seems like most of the time I'm talking to you, Eric, every year, you always have people down. I know you hire at a a different um time, but you're always down. I don't think you've ever hardly ever been full since I've been here.
Yeah, we were for about a year ago, that was the first time, and that, and this is really why I'm looking for that, for that flexibility, just so that I can make, comfortably make two offers, I know I'm going to lose them. You know, i- i- you know, in theory, I, you know, we could get full again here in six months or in four months. And if I didn't have another F T E just as a security blanket, I don't feel comfortable going to U S D and offering someone a year in advance. Let's say all of a sudden a bunch of people applied for my position, I was able to fill up, which would be great. And then if I, could I go and offer a job to somebody a year later? And that's all I'm asking for is just to give me the flexibility where I feel comfortable that in a year from now, if I remain full, I'd have an unfunded F T E, you know, just to give me the flexibility, say, yeah, I've actually got a job for you in a year from now, that's that's all. My expectation is I'll still be two or three down, I mean, truly, I I expect that to happen.
But why I'm asking that is Janet could say the same thing, um, others could say the same thing because they're always down, so I I guess I'm trying to figure out why you'd be different, except that you said the attorney's different, but right now, um, trying to fill F Ts and keep F Ts is a a big thing for each department, like I said, Janet's always down and have to rehire, so if she hires, we get a recruiter and they hire, or not a recruiter, a person that we're always one ahead on our F Ts to make sure that if you lose one. Yes, I'm.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I may understand a little bit if you don't mind me asking a couple of questions. An unfunded F T E is you're not paying them, you're just offering them a job and so you can hold them into a slot. Now, you've got four, and and I'm going to run through his scenario and make, and let me know if I've understood this, now listen to the questions. So you've got this one unfunded, so you're not paying them, you just said we've got your job, and you've got these other four. You hire on two other attorneys, but you still got two open, whenever this individual graduates, then you actually take them out of the unfunded and apply them to one of the other ones, and you still may have one open, but you're applying them there.
That's right.
Now, here is one of my questions, what happens if you get great applicants for all your other ones and you fill all four of them, maybe this is the question that needs to be asked, what happens to that unfunded one?
Well, and that's, um, that's what always makes me a little bit nervous, right, and so if we are truly full, my, uh, in theory, I would either have to come to you and ask for a supplement to pay that person for four months to finish out the year, because they generally come in August, or I'd have to get rid of somebody, and, you know, ho- I've.
Make sure you hold on one of those other slots and say, no, I'm not going to hire, I can hire one more person because I know this guy's coming.
That's right.
To fill that slot.
And and and.
I think I understand.
Yep, and all, and we've been doing this half-funded for a long time and we've never had that issue, but. But you know, this is, I, I, I wanna start making two offers every year, and I think we need to. And that fully unfunded one gives me that latitude to do so.
Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll follow up. I, I've been on Bob Drenner's board, I think, for five years now. And he's absolutely right, you know. They're getting their foot in the door as an attorney and so the turnover is moving along, so he, they watch. They're, they've been down, like you said, Ed, but in order to get these new ones recruited and planned. He, he needs to have it on the books, it's saying unfunded, full one, so he can do two, because he knows he's. He knows his personnel. You know what I'm saying? Some are gonna move on and some are, are. You know, just by looking at the numbers, you know in the last five years where you've been, so. That's where it's coming from.
When we look back historically, we lose between three and four attorneys every single year at our size. And that's just the nature of being a public defender's office. It's hard work. It's oftentimes a stepping stone to something else. And you know, there's some people that are dedicated and wanna do their whole career, but unfortunately, we have a lot of other people that get a lot of other opportunities. They gain a lot of experience and, does that answer your question, Tom?
It does. Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, and, and, and this is kinda as I'm processing it through. If you didn't have the unfunded and you go and you recruit these two kids and, I say kids, but you know, lawyers. Then you're putting them into funded positions, so let's just assume because they have to be offered a job a year in advance. I'm just making sure I understand it. Now, you're not gonna pay them during that time because they're in school, but they're taking up a funded position.
Correct.
And then if they graduate, if they decide not to come here, or you need those positions for something else. Then you don't have that flexibility because of the way the government works, because a lot of times we're inefficient, that we, we set up the way you could hire. So I think I understand why you need the, the unfunded, so that you can offer them a position, knowing that you're gonna have attrition of so many every year.
Right.
And understanding it better now.
Eric, I was, I read Representative Fitzgerald's uh opinion piece in the newspaper this last week. And I was a little surprised and I think I have these numbers correct. She was saying that only about one-third of the new graduates. Passed the bar exam the first time.
I, I don't, it was one-third of the people from USD that took the bar in February. So it's a little bit different than new graduates, because most of the new graduates would have taken it in July. So a lot of the, the February bars are people that, some of taking it for the first time. And I forget the numbers that are, I, I've seen them, but I can't recall them off the top of my head. And some of those other people, other of those test takers were second or third time takers. So the, the, I think the correct way to say that is of the February bar takers, thirty-three percent passed. Fifteen took it, five passed, ten failed. And on, on that note, um, I'm, I'm, I'm drafting. That I hope to get in front of the Rules Committee or the, the Supreme Court for a rules hearing. In, in November to allow for an apprenticeship program instead of taking the, what's called the multi-state bar exam. Um, you know, we've, I've, I have employees and have had, you know. Managed over fifty lawyers at this point in the size of the office that we have. And if, just because somebody doesn't pass that bar, that multi-state bar exam the first or second or even third time. I, you know, if they're hard workers, they can do the work. They absolutely can. I don't think that's an accurate reflection on the ability to actually practice law. It's very closely tied to how well people do on the LSAT or the law school entrance exam test. And how they're gonna do on that. And it's an efficient way to find core competency for a lot of lawyers. But it's, it doesn't fit, it's a standardized test. It doesn't fit everybody. And um, you know, I, I'll, people that had difficulty passing that test, I will readily assign them a first degree murder case. Because I know they can do the work. Um, I think, you know, once you do a hundred DUIs, the hundred and first DUI, you're gonna be just fine. You just will. So that, you know, like, an office like myself, like, like Mark's office, we've got. Lots of supervision available for people. If we had them in a one-year apprenticeship, I'd be very confident that we could certify, yeah, they're, they're. There's, they, they, they possess a core competency. So I don't quite agree with Mary's uh full diploma privilege. Um, and it would really take great coordination with the law school, which is not currently in support of that. Um, like Wisconsin has it, but it's really curriculum-based. You have to have rigorous classes focused on Wisconsin law. Um, and, and to, to, to do that. And not all law students at the University of Wisconsin do that curriculum-based diploma privilege program. Um, and I, and I still think some, you still need to do the assay. I think we have Indian law as part of our bar exam. I think it's crucial for all lawyers in the state of South Dakota to have the fundamentals of Indian law, just based on reservation systems that we have here. Plus ethics. I think what people really want out of lawyers is they're, they're ethical, tell the truth, they don't steal, those sort of things. And um, so I think that's what I'm working on. I hope to get it to a rules committee that would create a path forward. And you'd have to go into a public service. So it'd be a state's attorney's office, a public defender's office, um, legal aid office, et cetera. And with, with the structure in, in the office, it could support the management and, and supervision, so.
So are there other states that do that? Run a, a apprenticeship?
There, there are. There's a, um, there's a model in, that's a little bit different. It's been in New Hampshire. And Oregon is looking at some new programs and so is. Oh gosh, it's either Utah or Nevada. One of the, it's another western state that's, that's had a, that is looking at some other options as well. Because I think there's a recognition that's, um, and South Dakota changed its standards. So we used to, you know, we're one of the more difficult states now to pass the bar. So we have a lot of people that go and take it in Minnesota, pass the bar and then transfer here, or in, in, in Iowa, so. Anyway, well, that, that's another. I hope we can create a path forward that could help a department like myself, that, you know, to recruit, retain. You can come do public service and not have to take the multi-state bar exam, you know. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross, connect.
Eric, you got thirty-six full-time employees.
That's an error, actually. It needs to be thirty-five with the.
Well, how do thirty-five?
Yeah, so I need to update that when.
Out of that, those thirty-five, how many have over five years' experience? Wasn't that one of your issues? Is that they, you just have so many new employees and?
Yeah, um, you know, on our, I'll have to get back to you on what that is. On the lawyer side, we still have a pretty solid core of folks that have been there. Um, and so we have six or seven with over five years of experience, you know, so. But, you know, it's, it, that's tough. On, on the, on the staff side, we have more, you know, the staff. You know, it's, we usually retain staff pretty well, but the uh.
Another item, I was, I'm just looking at your rentals, so two thousand. Twenty-two, we adopted forty-three thousand and that's, so actually, is that the, is that the facility that you rented? It's only nineteen thousand a year?
Yeah, we were, we, um, we had thought that it was gonna be substantially higher and it wasn't. We, and we were, we felt pretty lucky in getting the spot we've got, because it's close and, and it was a lot less than. When we had done the research the year, you know, the summer before, we were thinking that's what the rental would be and, or, or right. That'd give us some options anyway. Um, there were very few options, but we found one that, that worked. And it was about half of what we expected it to be, so we were really pleased with that.
Okay.
Other questions, Eric? Anything else, Eric?
Nothing.
One final question. So the dean at the law school, would he support your idea before the Rules Committee?
I, I met with him last week, or, and he is generally supportive of the concept of a. And you know, the devil's always in the details, so I'm, I'm drafting that proposal now. I'll submit it to him and all the other stakeholders prior to the Rules Committee to see who will sign on. But I think he's, he, he was in favor, in concept of an apprenticeship program. And just, so we'll see if he supports the final one. I hope so. It'd be nice to have him on board.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Vargo.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Commissioners. Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. Uh, but I'm going to lead with an announcement that I learned last night. And I was not allowed to share until just literally seconds ago. Uh, which is that Governor Noem has asked me to serve as the Attorney General uh between now and January.
Congratulations.
It is my intention to take a leave of absence and then to come back here. This is not a way to get to peer. I don't usually want to get to peer. With all due respect to those of you who love it. Um, but. As soon as I finish with this, I'm gonna be making some calls, trying to get sworn in and heading up to peer to start that work. So we're one more lawyer down. The good news is that we have. Uh, some really good people in the pipeline. I really wanna thank the commission uh for the action that they took earlier this year. I think that it was incredible in terms of both employee morale. And it allowed us to do recruiting on a scale and of a type that we otherwise would not have been able to do. Uh, as Eric just explained, sometimes it's hard to uh reach out and really kind of commit to people. Uh, when you've got too many for the number of spots you have. Even though you know that probably not all of them are gonna come, not all of them are gonna decide they wanna work for you, it's a very difficult process. And having those extra FTEs, uh, we have now filled uh all of the previous FTEs. Now, they're not all in the office yet, but there are people in the pipeline who've accepted offers. And what this is allowing me to do is to continue to recruit from some other people we've got in our sights. Uh, with the two that you gave us and the one unfunded. Uh, that being said, we are asking you to finalize that request that I made uh earlier in the year with the third funded FTE. And an additional unfunded FTE. Uh, and I would like to add a little bit to what Eric just mentioned.
Is that in your budget? I, I mean, is that in your proposal here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Um, I would like to add a little bit to what Eric just said, though, in terms of why our recruiting and retention is different. I think our onboarding process is by far and away the lengthiest of any of the organizations that the county uh has, uh, between the two of us. Uh, my people aren't generally ready to do first degree murder cases until they've been here at least five, and I'd be much more comfortable at ten years. So you have to have a pretty good group of people coming in, because you know you're gonna lose some, uh, down the road. So you have to have a large enough critical mass that you keep some that are coming at ten years. That being said, uh, one of the people we've successfully recruited here, actually, I shouldn't even say recruited. I think he recruited himself. Uh, is a former chief deputy with the office, uh, who was an assistant US attorney and is now a circuit court judge. Uh, was the state's attorney up in Mead County, uh, and Kevin Crowe's gonna be rejoining us. But the tradition is when you resign from the circuit court bench, you give six months' notice. So we're still five and a half months away from that, so. It's, again, it's a very hopeful thing. It, it's very uh gratifying to see people that wanna come back, wanna work here. Uh, even with the challenges that prosecution presents in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, but it's a, it's a really uh hopeful sign for us. Uh, so we are asking for those two spots, one funded, one unfunded. Uh, I'll again add a little bit to what Eric said in terms of how we're recruiting. Probably a year and a half, two years ago, we actually had turned some, some kids away. People that we liked, that we said, yeah, we're, we're full of. And we kind of knew, you know, there were people that had been here during the summer. We were making these decisions in September, October for the next August. And realistically, we could almost have bet that a position would open up in the meantime. But almost is not quite good enough. The unfunded FTE allows us to say that even with, you know, we can bring that person in. And given that we have returned money to the, the county in excess of the, the value of a, an attorney every year. Uh, since I've been here now, my ninth straight year of doing that. I think our high watermark was close to half a million and we're normally at least over into the six figures. So I think that we've proven that we aren't gonna go waste that, but it does allow us then to say, okay, we'll have that money. We'll make it up elsewhere if we needed to. And between those two, we can safely offer that candidate a job and put them in the pipeline so that we've got them. Uh, we don't have to worry about where they're gonna go in the meantime. The other thing that you will notice that is of significance in our budget, though, is uh computer money. Not for computers themselves, but for software. I think only Commissioners La Croix and Headcock were probably here when we first got onto the Zerker system, which is the law enforcement's. The system that law enforcement uses uh throughout South Dakota primarily, and certainly in Pennington County. When we contacted Zerker, they were very interested in creating uh what they call the prosecution module. In other words, something that would integrate between the law enforcement side and the prosecution side, which was very exciting to us. Because obviously, those are the people we work with the most. And that means that every time your software changes, you don't have to worry about getting two vendors to make sure that everything's still talking to each other. It's one vendor, the whole thing works as a unified whole. And I think it did work fairly well for quite a while. The problem is that the founder of the Zerker system, uh, whose father, by the way, was a prosecutor. The founder of that system sold it and was then an employee. I don't even know if he still works for the company at this point. But they've become much larger and I would say much less responsive to us. And we remain their only prosecution client. And as you can imagine, when you only have one prosecution client. Putting the time and effort into updating that software and figuring out where the kinks are, just doesn't happen the same way if you have. I mean, they have thousands, if not tens of thousands, of law enforcement clients. And so how much time and effort they put in and what they charge us is very different than what they're able to do with law enforcement. So we have been looking at prosecutor by carpeel. Uh, it does carry um some sticker shock, so to speak. There is a one-time. Fee of just over three hundred thousand dollars. Mini Haha County just went to this and they spent about almost exactly that amount of money, uh, but they were able to take it out of some of their one-time funds. Uh, we did not leave ourselves that flexibility, so it would have to be in the budget. But the good news is it's not an ongoing or repetitive thing. Which is to say that between, we would need to keep Zerker because that's how we do discovery. It's how we see law enforcement reports, uh, et cetera. So there's some additional cost because we have to pay a lower fee for that and then carpeel itself. But I think it comes to approximately fifteen thousand dollars is the difference between the two. Uh, so it'll be an increase somewhat from what we're paying for Zerker right now. But not a very meaningful amount compared to the one-time kind of sticker shock that we're facing at this exact moment. So. There are no questions.
Questions, Mark.
And Mr. Shiller.
So Mark, is there any other funding out there, you know, with uh this Build Back Better and a bunch of other stuff? As, as talked to Liz, that maybe we could find some funding to do that?
Certainly, I'm open to doing that, and I know that Liz looks around all the time. She'll occasionally email me with, hey, you saw this. Would it be useful to offset some things? We've actually got a, a request in the pipeline now for our Yate Court. Uh, that we're very hopeful, uh, that we look like a really solid candidate for. I forget what the exact numbers are on that, but it would really allow that to take off and become kind of a regular thing as opposed to, you know. You know how volunteer organizations get. You, in particular, would know how volunteer organizations get. Sometimes you have really great people and then it just gets to be too much for them. Eventually, people have to get paid if you're going to have a professional, ongoing thing. And so we're working on that for the Yate Court. Uh, but I'm not aware of anything in this area, largely because it's just a commercial area. Like, people are less likely to wanna give you money to just upgrade your software because they view that as a normal thing. When we're talking about grant funding, they really like to see something new and different and exciting. And so it does tend to be far less often that you are allowed to apply it to upgrading your software system.
Yeah, well, I just wasn't sure, because I just attended a conference and went and attended one of the classes on some of that funding that's out there. And I forwarded to Joe and Liz to the information, so, you know, that was probably only about a month ago, a month and a half ago, so. Just maybe there's something.
Absolutely, and then, like I said, we work with Liz. Absolutely, and then, like I said, we work with Liz routinely.
Yeah.
Uh, anytime she sees anything that she thinks, and I don't know that she's aware that we're looking at the upgrade, but I can certainly bring that to her attention and see if we could maybe snag it offset.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Your current FTE is sitting at sixty-seven. Is that what I'm understanding off this paper here?
Correct.
And it was the same as last year?
Uh, as amended by the what you did in February.
Okay, so this request for a new one is the one that you're asking for, so to bring you to sixty-eight?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure, because I see sixty-seven in our proposed, so that's why I was like, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what your letter states versus what's here on the proposed. Now, out of the ones for twenty twenty-two, how many do you have open?
Right now, so I'm gonna count as filled the ones where somebody has said, I'm coming to work for you and I have a start date, but they're not here yet. Uh, we have two attorney positions and the unfunded attorney position that are still open, and we have one secretary position open.
And do you have open?
Four total. One unfunded, three funded.
Mark, tell me again the commitment that Mr. Croll has to live up to.
They ask for six months. I mean, it's kind of tradition, I think. Uh, because when you leave the bench, particularly, you know, the Fourth Circuit, I think, has three or four judges. Uh, that would be a huge workload change for the remaining judges and the process of getting people to apply. Uh, the Judicial Qualifications Commission does backgrounds on all of them. They're interviewed by the JQC. Then the interview with the govern, you know, the ones that are chosen, interview with the governor. So it usually takes about six months, and then often those people, you know, these tend to be very experienced, accomplished people. They have to wrap up their practice or certain cases or whatever the case may be. So it it tends to be, uh, let's put it this way, it would have been probably uncoored of him to give less than six months. It would not have been well received by the bench and annoying judges is something we try to avoid.
Mr. Chair. So how many do you have coming in? How many slots do you have that are in that being field position? I mean, they're open right now, but they're coming in.
We have one who's starting in mid to late July, two, and that's a person who's got a license and has been practicing, uh but has very little experience on the prosecution side. Uh, we have two more that are coming in who are straight out of law school, so they'll be joining us first, second week of August. And then we have Mr. Croll, Judge Croll, uh who's joining us in December.
So you were seven down?
We were eight down. We have hired and brought on board one that has joined us three, four weeks ago, so we were eight down at one point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Mark, I'm just looking at uh under other current expenditures, services and fees. What's the uh, if I'm looking at this right, there's a forty-nine point three-six percent change in that?
Which one are you looking at?
Yeah.
I'm like, which one?
Service and fees.
That's the software you just talked about, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the, that the big bump there is the software.
Okay, that was my question.
We had some cost of living stuff that we applied to everything, but the big bump was the three hundred thousand and change that goes into the software.
Well, then in two thousand twenty-four, that is, could essentially go back down.
It'll go back down. It will be about fifteen thousand more than what we had last year.
Okay.
So it'll be a little more, but not, nothing like what you're seeing here. This does not need to be sustainable. It just needs to be done.
And then, uh, under, under rentals, what's the sixty-four thousand, seven oh five? What's that allocated towards? Or twenty-four rentals? No, I'm just, I just noticed in two thousand twenty-two, there wasn't anything budgeted, and then two thousand twenty-three, there's. Okay. And then repairs and maintenance took a significant drop. Okay.
So I know we talked about that uh storage space last year, the budget time. And one of the problems we have is converting all that material. Uh, has anything further been done in regard to that?
Still working on it. Uh, we ran into some problems with COVID. The the storage place was a little less accessible to us as far as like getting in there and devoting the 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 time and the the personnel hours to get there and go through things. Uh, we have had, in the office, uh we've done some fairly significant work in our high-density storage to free those up. But unfortunately, that doesn't free us up to bring things back from off-site storage because the whole point of that is to create a couple of offices that Buildings and Grounds is going to hopefully be able to put in for us uh because of the need for space.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
On your new job, do you get paid from us and the Attorney General? Do you get paid from the state?
No, I will be uh in my infinite wisdom, taking a pay cut. Uh, the state will pay me and you will not. So the the mechanism is that the circuit court gets to appoint an interim state's attorney. That person will be paid as the state's attorney, and then everything that person gets paid comes out of my bu, my my salary, so it's a complete wash. So I will get zero from you.
So they'll get the same amount as you did, um because we have it set by state statute, right?
Well, that part isn't set by state statute, but you did set it. Uh, and you did not, we're not on steps or anything like that, so the person will come in and be set at the state's attorney salary.
But not, is yours different than what what we have budgeted, meaning um where they start at, at a state's attorney?
Yes. I don't think we have steps, though, that, do we?
We don't, but you aren't at base.
That's what I mean.
We have a base for the elected officials and then uh we as, we establish, the board establishes, so.
And so that's what, that was my question, who's gonna take your spot?
Well, that'll be up to presumably Judge Fifeley. Uh, as the presiding judge, it says the circuit court in the statute, but getting eight people to make a decision, I assume that that will devolve to the presiding judge. But I guess, I don't know. He could take a vote.
My understanding, they, you got a lot of stuff to sign and oversee when you get in there.
So how many years, do you, do you vote next, or do they vote on state's attorney next year or a year after?
Uh, we're two years out, so the primary for uh state's attorney would be June of twenty twenty-four.
With these guys. Thank you.
You're not quite rid of me yet.
Any further questions? Future Attorney General.
Hopefully by noon sometime.
Appreciate it, Mark. Hey, good luck.
Thank you. It's, it is a great honor. It is, I will tell you that I believe that the only reason that I would be considered for something like this is because of the office that we have and the reputation that that office has and the people that work there have made this whole concept possible. And so it's kind of bittersweet to be leaving them, even for a little bit. But it's also very exciting to be working on a different stage and at a different level, so.
So you can't negotiate that and have the governor send two or three attorneys out here in the meantime, huh?
Well, weirdly enough, as the Attorney General, I do have the ability to assign assistant attorneys general to certain cases, so.
I like that.
Who knows? If they're getting me for a little bit, we might uh see what can flow in the opposite direction.
I think that's fantastic that you get to try it out and go experience that, so that's, that's really good.
Thank you, sir.
Callous.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
We have now gone through the morning schedule.
Why aren't we doing the sheriffs? Why are we doing it at seven, five, I guess?
Uh, Sheriff was not available for today or tomorrow, as I understand. And so he was, he proposed to do it uh at our rigor commission meeting. That was my understanding.
Do we wanna take a short break and?
We can, and then we have, uh, we certainly can move some ahead if they would, wouldn't mind. We have Highway that's here. Uh, would you mind doing it after, after a break?
Move to take a ten-minute break. Take it.
Motion and a second. Oh, this paper indicator saying aye.
Aye.
Post. How's your guard? Back into session. Thank you, Joan. Um, and we will comment on Joe Miller, Highway Department. Joe.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Um, to start, like, I guess I'd come to you every year uh with our large projects here. Um, first one is Sharon Lake Road. I'll just give you a little update on that, uh, though it won't impact our twenty twenty-three budget. Um, I'm pretty confident that we'll have all those bills paid uh this year in twenty twenty-two. Um, so it's very nearing completion. They're gonna start laying asphalt next Wednesday um on the section that doesn't have it quite yet, so hope to be paved out by the the Sturgis Rally, so it'll be open for motorcycle traffic. It currently is open for motorcycle traffic, but it would be a lot more conducive to those, so. Um, if you haven't driven on it, I encourage you to do so. It's uh turned out very nice. Contractor's done a very nice job on that. Um, next up is Deadwood Avenue, a project that's been on our books for quite some time. Um, this year I did reach out to the state and ask them. Um, we have a curve on Deadwood Avenue. We call it the Dead Man's Curve. I think there's been one fatality since I've been in this position, and there's been two or three since uh in the last decade or so. Um, so I reached out to the state to ask if we could turn this into a safety project. Um, they said absolutely, uh, so we took that, our portion of that project and and the city's portion, what's left of the city's portion, turned it into a safety project, so we'll only have to say, pay ten percent of that total cost, so. Um, slated at about two point five million dollars or something thereabouts. Who knows what, by the time it's all said and done, what it'll come in at. Um, but we'll only, again, have to pay ten percent of that uh, uh, whatever that project does come in at. The city is moving forward with their portion up to where the the affected landowner is or the the landowner that we still need right-of-way from um this year. I believe they've closed it down already and and are working on it. I don't know if they've broke ground on it yet, quite yet, but. Deadwood Avenue uh won't be in twenty-three, but it's been on our books for quite some time, and it'll be on a twenty-four project, so. Any questions on Deadwood Avenue?
Glad to see it's, I seen some construction signs up into the, so it's good to see it's getting started. I think we've been talking about it for quite a while.
Yes, the city is moving forward with their portion of it, so that's, and that's a large portion of it. We have a little, some grading work and stuff on on the rest of it, but the the majority of it is that city's portion of it.
So we are talking up to the Meade County line?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
So it'll go from city limits to the Meade County line will be the the safety project.
So there, will there be quite a bit of realignment there just before we get to the Meade County line?
Uh, I think it pretty much is on alignment. It'll be regrading with some shoulder widening and stuff. Um, the Dead Man's Curve is right past the city limits there. So it, for whatever reason, whenever it was built, it jogged to the to the east and down the hill, I'm assuming, just for, simply for the terrain. Back then, when that was probably built, it was, it followed the terrain because the section line actually goes straight north and south, so. Uh, it's gonna be realigned back to the section line and and some dirt added and whatnot, so.
So all the right-of-way now has been secured?
On Deadwood Avenue, no.
Oh, okay.
Nope. We have not uh come to an agreement with the landowner, so.
Okay.
See still in Arizona?
I reached out to him here about a month ago, and I have not heard back from him, so um about time to reach out to him again, so. Trying to do it about once a month, but haven't uh come to an agreement with him, so it's probably come time to, for the commission and the city decide what they wanna do there, so.
How much of that portion is ours?
As far as on, what's that?
On Deadwood Avenue, how much?
We've got about, I believe it's two miles.
Okay.
Well, 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 it might be just a mile. Somewhere between a mile and two, so.
Okay.
Um, the next up is the ever-famous South Rodford Road. Um, Ron talked about this a little bit ago, about Rodford Road a little bit at the last meeting, I think during his committee reports. Uh, we did have a meeting yesterday. The state has put over to the federal highway for a preliminary review of the environmental uh study, the environmental assessment, excuse me. Um, they're hopeful they're gonna get comments back so they can address those comments, and then they'll submit that to the federal highway. Once that's submitted to them, they get it reviewed and approved, we'll submit it to the Forest Service. Um, and then we can proceed to to bid letting sometime this fall, so we're, we're very close and uh it's one of those things, I've said that every year since I've been here, I think, so. Fingers crossed, uh, and then uh there, we're not, we don't have a whole lot of the money in our budget for twenty-three simply because we have the STP funds that, when we transferred the funding from South Rodford to Sharon Lake Road. We still have STP funds to use and then um also an SIB loan that's through the state that we'll use prior to using local dollars. Um, the big caveat to that is we really don't know where this thing's gonna come in, and um the engineer's estimate was eleven point six, and that was two years ago. I asked about an updated estimate yesterday at our meeting, and they don't really wanna do an updated estimate till we get through the environmental, all of, everything updated essentially, so they can, the plans aren't gonna change before we do another engineer's estimate, so. I'm estimating anywhere between that sixteen to eighteen million dollars.
So since this project started, how many of these environmental studies have they done?
I believe just, I mean, the one.
Just one, and it just keeps getting revised then?
Correct. Since they, they did the one, and then from my understanding, they uh, they had to re-up it because so much time had passed, so.
Every two years.
They have to reevaluate it, so.
Then we had to redo it for the bridge.
The bridge one, we had to do twice, I think.
Yep, and the bridge is now complete, so. It was completed last November. So, yeah, that's our, our large unknown, um, one of our last large projects. I mean, once we get Sharon Lake Road done, that'll be um our next large project to get tackled, and we're hopeful that we'll have construction started in in twenty twenty-three. It'll be a, a two, a season and a half or so, um, is kind of what we're estimating, probably two seasons, and we'll do all the grading work. And then the first year and then do the paving the second year, so it'll stay gravel through that, that first season and through that first winter, and then it'll get paved the following um season.
So tell me again, final completion on Sharon Lake Road is scheduled for?
End of August.
Okay.
So. They're finished with all the, the grading, um, they're putting gravel, they should be probably finished, uh, topping out with the asphalt millings and the base course sometime this week, and then they'll start paving next Wednesday, so.
So that area of Sharon Lake Road, uh, where the bridges are, are they gonna do an overlay over the existing asphalt?
That is correct, so they'll do a leveling course. Um, so it wasn't originally in the plans to to do a leveling course, um, but as part of a change order, we it was to to increase the ride and increase the strength of the the existing asphalt, which shows to do a leveling course, which will add asphalt, make a nice smooth surface for the additional two-inch overlay. Um, and that's going to happen after the rally.
So they go over the bridges too with an overlay?
No, nope. The, well, they'll mill into the bridges, so um the bridges will remain concrete.
Okay.
So Commissioner Ross Connect has been asked to be involved with the three eighty-five projects. Uh, they're starting next year in twenty twenty-three?
Uh, two thousand twenty-four, but our first meeting's gonna be in Hill City, I think, uh, July, middle of July. I've got it here somewhere. And then a, a follow-up on that, are we, we were uh asked if we could uh be available all day on the twentieth of July for a a road trip, but I haven't heard back if that's a go or not.
I heard back from, I think Gary and Travis are good for Monday, the eighteenth, right? And then the other two were going, you and?
Lloyd.
Lloyd.
I hadn't, we hadn't heard back from Lloyd yet.
Yeah.
And I already went on the trip already. We already went down there last week, so I went down with Highway on uh and went to, what, talked with Sixters.
Four or five.
Yeah, we had Ruby, Zeb and Jigs on one. We had Josh and Larry. Larry on one, and then we had Z, um, Jim, um, Jim, uh, Kirsted is Jim, of course, Kirsted, so it's J E M. So we talked with them too, so um we uh, I need to go to Sage Creek, but um there's a couple of ranchers that want me to go up there with them, so.
So I guess, yeah, we just, if Lloyd and and. So I guess, yeah, we just, if Lloyd and Ron are good on the 20th.
When did you say, oh, the 20th?
So you, you and Gary are the 18th. You've already confirmed that, I believe.
I don't have that on my calendar. I am out of town on the 18th.
July 18th.
July 18th?
July 18th. That was the email I sent you that you thought I meant June 18th, which was Planning Commission Meeting Day. And I hadn't heard back from you after that for July 18th.
Okay. If you hadn't heard back from me, got busy. And I'm out of town that week of the 18th. But I will be out there this weekend, or Thursday. So I will be out in the area already this Thursday.
Okay.
So our first highway meeting will be at the new Hill City Community Center on the 14th at 9:00 AM.
Okay. Would you like my presence there? We've kind of?
I don't, you gotta be there, but I'll keep you posted.
Right. And we were involved in the design meetings and some of the stuff early on, and it really doesn't affect us a whole lot.
Nope. I just thought I'd kind of give you an update after that meeting, just so that you're aware of kind of what they're talking, at least the timeframe.
Absolutely.
And if they actually literally close 385 down for the summer, that, that could have an impact on the usage of Sharon Lake Road and other arterials.
Right. Yeah, I was just talking to Chief Deputy Brian. They're talking about using Boulder Hill for a bypass or a detour in Sharon Lake Road. So we'll have to have some sort of agreement, halt or a detour agreement with the state.
Some of it's going to be blasting in both of those areas. Makes it impossible to keep it open all the time.
Right. Yeah. Typically, they'll have to blast, and you know, they'll close the road and blast, and then clean it. Typically, it's not a whole season closure for that sort of thing. But it sounds like for that Sharon Lake to Three Forks, it's quite the extensive deal. So.
Thank you, Joe, for you and Sean taking your time out. Ranch, some of the ranchers had called me and asked if I could come out so right away. So when I said I could look at it, that's why we went out there early. We didn't know what day we were going. We tried to figure it out for Wednesday and Thursday, and Joe and Sean had time that afternoon, and so did I. So that's the only reason why I went ahead. Again, we got some major data and some things that Joe was already working on already. So thank you to the Highway Department and Joe and Sean for moving forward on all that, because it made a huge difference. We also saw some equalization stuff that I called Shannon, talked to Travis about it, since that was his district, with Larry, and to go to the surrounding area, because they had major storm that ripped sheds, or ripped sheds, ripped roof off these warehouse-looking buildings, moved bins. It was the craziest wind I've ever seen in a long time. And Larry Eisenberg said that those bins have been there for, I don't know, a long, Joe? I can't remember.
Probably longer than I've been alive.
I was gonna say.
I think is the term that he used.
Kind of crazy. But Shannon was on top of it already on a lot of it. But just had a good visit with people, and I appreciated the follow-through on Joe and Sean.
So the day after our meeting, I got a phone call from Chance Trask, who must be down that area. And he just said, thank you for making the offer to go out and personally look at those roads. So we're kind of communicating through an email now. So I told him after the 20th, and we go down there, I'd follow up with him.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Next up, we have our transportation plan that we were hoping to get done this year, but funding-wise, we needed to push it to next year. So I do have it in the budget for next year. And I've also reached out to the MPO to have it put on their unified work plan, which they'll be voting on that in the fall. Gary spoke to the, I believe, at the last meeting about the 1416 radar hill study that was voted on last week at the MPO meeting and was put on their unified work plan, so we can move forward with the RFP for that. This is actually a county-wide transportation plan that we're looking at doing, and the MPO will participate within their boundaries at a cost share of, I believe it's the 18.05 and 81.95% cost share. So that's on the, in our budget for next year. Next, I can, I'll get into bridge funding. So I'll just go ahead and with the big grants, since the passage of the wheel tax, we've got, the county has received seven bridge improvement grants totaling about $2 million. With that, there's been some federal money that's come down to the state and filtered down to the counties. We've received about $2.5 million in federal grant funding. And the big difference between the federal funding and then the state big grant is the state big grants is a hard number. So we were awarded the first one in last year for Thunderhead Falls. I believe that was in the amount of $470,000. And since we're going to go to bid for that project next year, whatever it comes in at, that 470 is, or that 470,000 is, just that, it's 470,000. So I'll back up here. In 2020, we received three federal bridge, I call them big grants, because they were federally funded, but they used the criteria from the Bridge Improvement Grant Program, so they didn't have to rewrite an entire program, essentially. We got three bridges on those. That was prior to the passage of the wheel tax. So after the passage of the wheel tax, we applied for Thunderhead Falls in 2021, which we received in the total of $470,600. In 2021, the feds also put some more money into the federal, or to the state for bridge improvements and bridge replacements. We were received two bridge improvement grants from the feds for those, Thunderhead Falls and Hammerquest. And then here in 2022, we applied for a total of six bridges, and we did receive all six of those. One on Sherman Street, one on Thunderhead Falls, and then four preservation grants that we were just, we just left those projects for construction through the rest of the year and into next year. So in summary, the total funding from the Bridge Improvement Grant funds from the state is about $2,088,500. And then the total grant funding from the federal government, and this is an estimate, because again, this, the federal portion of it is a cost share. It's estimated to be about $2.5 million for a total grant funding from both the state program and the federal government program of $4.6 million. So of that, from the wheel tax, having the wheel tax, it's gotten us approximately $2 million. We were eligible for the other, the federal portion of that, $2.5 million without the wheel tax. So.
Two million, when you say gotten us about $2 million, you're talking about grants strictly?
Correct. We would have never been eligible for that prior to the passage of the wheel tax.
Generated us about $1,004,000 or so in addition to that.
Correct. Yep. So it's generated us about $1,004,000 in revenue that we were able to use towards funding these programs, or funding those bridges. But as always, there's always more to do than there is money. So we had to postpone Sherman Street and some other preservation projects, simply because we didn't have the revenue in next year's budget. So if we had the revenue to support doing Sherman Street, we would have gladly tried to get a bid for construction next year. But due to the constraints of our budget, we had to choose, you know, and it makes sense to bid Thunderhead Falls together. Those two projects are about a mile, about a half mile apart. So with that, I will get into our Capitol Hall. Or I guess, are there any questions on bridge initiatives?
Go ahead, Commissioner Cross.
So Joe, you know the structure of our current wheel stacks. It's 2, 2, 2, 2, and 24. Looking at Lawrence County, looking at Meade County. If you, if we were going to modify that without too much criticism from the general public, what would your suggestion be if we were hypothetically?
So I mean, back in 2015, County Highway was taking about $2.5 million from our budget that we used to get out of the general fund. So from 2015 to 2021, we missed out on about $16 million. So essentially, we're going to have to make up that. We've been running short, essentially, and it's definitely starting to rear its ugly head. My suggestion would be to go to the $5, and that would generate about $3.5 million.
Straight across?
Correct.
And then do, what about the max? We're at 24 now. What would your suggestion be on that?
I believe, I think the statute allows for $60 max, I believe, is what it would be. So that would be my suggestion.
But it'd be pretty similar to Meade County.
So I kind of have that in a spreadsheet, and I didn't print it out. But so of the 66 counties, there's 27 counties that are already at the $5 max with a $60 maximum. There's another 16 counties that are at $4. And then there's another, it's like my spreadsheet. Wait, hold on, let me see here.
I'm guessing the ones that are maxed out probably have the largest amount of bridges in the county. Just because, you know, the ones that haven't really implemented the wheel tax, it seems to me they didn't have any bridges, or they had very few bridges.
We were one of the last, and I don't know this for sure, but I believe we were one of the last counties that had any bridges to implement a wheel tax. So there's still Buffalo County, Harding County, Hyde County, Jones, McPherson, and Oglala, Dakota, that do not have a wheel tax as of last year, when this spreadsheet was printed. So there's 15 counties that have $2 per wheel. There's only one county that has $3, and then there's 17 counties that have $4. So and the thing with going to the $5, we get the maximum points towards the big program. So we get that full 10 points for having $5. So then we, in turn, we don't have to put in that extra 10% that we put in. So we would have gotten another 10% on top of that $2 million. We could have potentially gotten another $200,000 in grant funding. But we chose, when we were putting in for these grants, to make up that difference, that six-point difference with funding. And to get there, we had to put an additional 10% in. Since we're talking about revenue, I guess there is the other option. South Dakota Codeified Law 101213 also allows the county to put in a road and bridge levy, which can basically be 60 cents per thousand is the maximum taxable value. And Cindy, I think you said this would be referable. But if I did my math correctly, based on the 2021 taxable value, which was $10,711,508,796, based on that value, it would be approximately $6.5 million.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Ed Carter.
So we go from two to five, then it's referable, isn't it?
Well.
Once you go past $2.
It potentially, if we declare it also as an emergency in order to take care of our bridges, it may not be referable. So I think as options that Joe mentions, you know, the levy, if you did the levy, that would go against the property taxpayers again. And so to me, that's not a very good option. I think the option is, is to increase the wheel tax from the $2 to the $5, join those other 27 counties that are already at the $5, and raise it the maximum to the $60. So that would, that would generate us approximately another $2 million from the wheel tax alone, plus lower the amount that we would have to provide as our share for grant dollars. So, because we wouldn't have to be buying down on the points, basically. I don't know if it was buying down or buying up on the points. But anyway, it would save us some dollars on that area too.
So Gary, what's the max now?
The max is $5. By law, you.
Six dollar max per person. What is the max per person now? Is it the same? 24?
24, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Gary, if I may, I mean, some of the reasons for this, I laid out Rodford Road. If it comes in much more than that, I don't know that the county's going to be able to pay for it. After Sharon Lake Road is done, and even after South Rodford Road is done, at that $16 to $18 million, we don't have any money in our reserves anymore. We deplete that pretty much completely down to about a million bucks, which for the mileage that we have, is not a whole lot. I mean, that's one bridge, one large bridge, right? Nowadays. So the cost for bridges have gone up. Everything is continuing to go up. You know, we have, currently, we have 20 bridges that are structurally deficient, which means they need, they're in need of replacement, or they have weight restrictions on them. And then the engineers have deemed them structurally deficient. There's actually approximately 80-plus bridges that are at the end of their lifespan, which the end of their lifespan is approximately 50 years old. We had, everybody remembers the 72 flood. Well, I don't, that was not even a thought at that point. But so 72 flood, we replaced a lot of bridges in a short order. So a lot of these bridges are coming to the end of their lifespan. We've kicked the can down the road quite a bit, and now it's unfortunately come the time to pay the piper. I mean, we had a bridge collapse last year. We had a bridge collapse in 2019. So I mean, the need is there. How many more of these bridges are going to have to collapse before we get ahead of it? Right? The other thing, as I stated earlier, the bid prices have been coming in 20 to 30% higher. We didn't, we bid an asphalt overlay this year for two and a quarter miles. We budgeted $2.5 million. Two years prior to that, we did an overlay for eight miles. The, it came in at about 110,000 a mile. So we figured, okay, 250,000. That came in at $358,000 this year. Our safety project on Nemo Road in Bogus Gym came in at $950,000. The engineer's estimate was 725. Our truck bids from last year were 112,000. This year's bid is 152,000. Motor graders last year, 325,000. This year is 360,000. And our chip seal costs have gone up astronomically as well, just with the increased cost of oil. So with that being said, I believe the need is there.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lacroix.
You know, Joe, you know, I have absolutely no doubt. But I think, you know, what I need for some information is just what you said, some, as we had the first time, you know, what bridges are still out there, the ages that I'm, because that was our original intent. And we didn't perceive, you know, we thought this was a good plan moving forward a few years when we implemented the $2 tax. And I think it got us going. But what happened with this inflation and the economy and the prices going up, it's a double whammy. So it's actually, it, we didn't even equal to what we had gained. We actually are losing ground. And so, but I need the information of how many more bridges we got, where we're at, you know. I know we've done some, but if you could just give me now where we're at with that. And I mean, you're absolutely right. The cost, the bidding process now, there's so much going on. The prices are coming up 30% higher than what you budgeted for, or you couldn't even plan for it. A lot of times, you can't even plan for it, because they're adding on the fuel charge and top of that. So it's a tough deal. But I just need that information, so I can communicate that, get the constituents out there where we're at. Because they're feeling it just like we are too. So but the thing is with this one, though, is it's spread out evenly to everybody, not just one.
Correct.
So.
Chairman.
So if I may, we have, I don't know what other data you're looking for. We had 21 bridges that were structurally deficient, that are in need. We have, you know, we have seven that are under bridge improvement grants that are under design. Six of those are, all seven of those are shovel-ready. But due to the process and how long it took to get through the process, you know, we just went to bid for those here this June, I believe. Early June is when we bid those. The reconstructions, we're going to bid those sometime in July. So there's two more for next year's construction. We currently have one under construction on Sonquist Lane out in Johnson Siding. That was one of our structural deficient bridges. So we're getting there, but it's, again, it's the process and the time and the money to get there is.
I guess what I'm asking for is an executive summary. So when I get, communicating people, I have it in a file that I can forward it to and say, hey, this is what it is.
Yep, absolutely. We can get that for you.
Commissioner Ed Carter.
This is one of the areas that, at first, when you think about it, declare emergency, you just kind of go, what? And then you go, okay, based on the information. And then you go, okay, based on the information, uh Lloyd's right. So what we do is we we go out to the public and we have to tell them why, Joe, and that's, um, I agree, Joe, on the executive summary because we're already already falling behind on infrastructure by a long ways in that cash flow. Um, a lot of the farmers and ranchers, as we listen, they say, well, I pay property taxes. Well, they also, they're ones with their big equipment and a lot of those areas of gravel that are uh making that huge difference on those roads and those bridges out of all the people. So to me, um, if we had to declare emergency on infrastructure, um, I'd be for that. And if it had to be that five dollars, we need to do something with Joe's budget in order to take care of that infrastructure. It's huge for those farmers and ranchers out there. It's huge for everybody, but that is their livelihood. So um, we're gonna have some pushback, but I can tell you just from the information and us, you know, what we do in Pennington County with that infrastructure, it's gonna be huge. So um I I I know personally I'll back it up um with that. So I'm now now all into increasing taxpayer dollars, that kind of thing, but if it's worth uh making difference in people's lives and those lives are every day for those farmers, ranchers and a lot of people that go to and from. Uh, we just don't have enough money in that budget. They can take it, you could take it from general fund, but it's not the same. That's property taxes. We're talking that people that use this, which increases the amount of people that are paying that uh wheel tax, not just property tax owners. So again, Lloyd, you had said that, but for me, I wanted you to know it sounded like I wasn't on board when I asked Gary how he was gonna pay for it, but I do remember um or how he was gonna do it. That we did had, we had said that before, declare emergency, and in this case with inflation. And if you look at those numbers in his budget and what he's buying equipment for um and everything else that that costs for supplies, it's huge. So again, I think for me, I could back that up. And when we bring that forward, I will back it up. So um I think it's gonna be huge for for this budget and for Pennington County. And again, I'll keep saying, one thing um I always uh stress is infrastructure. If you don't have that, everything else um kind of falls into place after that. So um it's a no-brainer for me.
Mister Chair.
One of the things we we learned from that, this last deal round, which I would appreciate if we still, we do, is putting the information on the website at a time and getting the information out there. That was one of the best things that happened is you guys have put it on the website and and got it out there. So it wasn't a surprise. People could refer to it and get them, look up the information that you could provide.
You're right, Lloyd, and that's what we mean by that um as a commission, not just for our information, but for taxpayers, Joe. Cause if you put everything that you have said and based on inflation as well, some of those things, uh those costs and how that has detrimented a lot of your budget, um that's gonna be huge for why that emergency is needed. So.
Commissioner Roskin.
Yeah, now also you might want to include photos, like the photos of the bridge uh on Nemo Road, the photo of the bridge over by New Underwood. But I, you know, when you sit there and say, well, we can increase taxes, we can go that route, but you do that, you generate income, but you don't qualify for the big. And that's the whole idea is to capitalize on some federal funding that they're kind of, they got us by the horns that if we don't participate, we're not gonna receive a lot of these taxes that they pay on fuel. So to me, it's a no-brainer also.
So Holly, tell me the timeframe that we would need to have first reading in order to make this work for uh twenty-twenty-three.
In order to get it completed by final budget in September, I'm gonna say the board probably would wanna start end of July with the number of required hearings and publication. I would say end of July.
Okay. And if I may, Gary, our our office manager, Connie Berlato, has has been done a wonderful job updating our our webpage and the information is out there. So what we've got for big grants is out there. Um, and and I don't know a lot of the reasons why probably isn't on there anymore, but the grant funding and all that stuff is on our county webpage. So.
The thing is, once you you bring this back up, yeah, all your information is there if you wanna sort through it, but it needs to be specific to where banging this is pops up like we did and that the people can read it and and if they wanna send a reply to us, five commissioners, they can.
And the pictures and stuff like Ron said, maybe just make a separate webpage and this is why. These are our numbers and stuff, Joe. I know you have it in there, but to sort through it is a little bit different than this is specific to Lloyd's right to what and why we need the five dollars instead of the two. Basically say why, why you need, we get to now why we need the five, why it's an emergency, all those reasons. And then, once you state the reason inflation, show them, show people um what is inflated um on supplies and everything else. And then um basically, you, I think you know how to do it, Joe, but that's what I think. Lloyd, if I'm correct, is looking for.
I think, I think, Joe, all all the information is out there on your website. Now, what I don't know is if the specific bridges, you know, when you name, say, twenty-one bridges, I don't know if those twenty-one are specifically.
No, they're not on there, I don't believe.
And I think that's one of the things that that Lloyd is suggesting that we receive is exact locations.
Silver City, I know that one. They can't get cement trucks across her. They have to.
Pump it across.
Uh, yeah, it's that. So what's the status on that bridge?
So we've got a fund, uh, we've got a grant for it. Um, and like I said earlier on, um, unfortunately, we don't, we didn't have the funding in our twenty-three budget to go out to bid for it. Um, with the passage of this, we may very well have the funding to to go out to bid and get that thing to construction. So we already have the grant. We just didn't have the funding um to fund it in twenty.
So that would be a good example, the let the general public know, you know, cause uh not just for convenience, but for safety.
And and we've increased our Facebook presence. Um, we've actually hired a marketing firm to help us promote and and get uh qualified applicants as well. So I think this is, this will go right hand in hand with with uh increasing our Facebook presence and um we can start making some posts and educating the public that way as well.
Mister Chair. My my final comment will be, and the reason why I ask that, it's the executive summer summary and having something to present is number one, in order to communicate that all, every commissioner is on the same page and we communicate the same message to everybody at the same time. Is key, you know, we start getting a little bit of information from over here, a little bit from over there. Then it convolutes the conversation and and that's and that's more what I'm looking for is something that we can all refer to and all be on the same page.
Yep, we'll put something together, something very similar to what we had last time. Uh, when we did the the two dollars, I think we did that same thing. So.
So we'll plan on uh having this prepared and for presentation to the commission for the July nineteen meeting, if I have that date correct.
So Mister Chair, if we do the five, five, five and sixty, can we get that like we did with the two, 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 twenty-four? Can we get some kind of an idea what that's gonna generate uh annually?
So I believe.
So I'm assuming it's gonna be around three, five.
So Holly's kinda already got that, I believe, and it's it's we, so we generated in twenty-twenty-one, we generated about one point four. So take that one point four times two and a half is essentially you'll get that three and a half million dollars. So I think originally it was a lot harder number to to calculate, cause simply, cause we didn't know, but now that we know, it's is a pretty routine math problem to to try and figure out. I believe that's correct, Holly.
Okay. Any further questions? What else, Joe? Oh, I'm.
Can I just make one?
Yes, you may. Have you ever noticed the state no, Cindy, do you?
No, and I don't usually speak up, but um I know that Liz has also been looking for uh transportation grants and she's reached out to you. I don't know if you've had a chance to go through those and start working applying, but that is out there as well. I just wanted the commissioners to know that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Tell her, thank you. Tell Liz thank you for sending all that. I sent her all that stuff from.
Okay, so we're setting now at eleven, uh, no, ten, about ten fifty.
Janet's gonna jump out of her chair.
Janet, would you like to uh present yours?
Janet was like, looking like she was ready for the, right out of the gates.
Go take a break, that's what I was saying. Okay. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Janet.
Before you, you have the budget that I have presented, um, I just wanna go over a few things with you. I know, um, I've been listening upstairs and I know that you've been talking about employees and at this point, we are still down five positions. Uh, we did have one person, we did hire two people that were supposed to start on Monday. One called at seven o'clock yesterday morning and the job that he was working at offered him more money to stay. So that's, that's some of the things that we're up against. Uh, if you noticed on our our um job applications, we have left it open. We're not closing it every two weeks. We're gonna leave it open until we get every position filled. You you're also going.
Did have one, one new one that did start yesterday?
We did have one new one that started. And as soon as it seems like the employees that um aren't aren't there very long are the ones that aren't staying because of the workload and stuff. So we're, we're still very behind in mail. We have some employees that do agree to come in and work overtime and some employees that don't wanna work overtime. So we're trying to get that under control. You'll also see that we have a significant increase in postage for the twenty-twenty-three budget. And the reason for that is January first, the state will start issuing new license plates. So anytime we issue issue new license plates with the increase in the postage, the last time we did that was seven years ago. And in the last five years, the postage has gone up twenty percent. And as you are aware, they have said that they're going to increase it twice a year. January and July, there will be an increase on postage every year. So with that being said, we do, we do have a resolution that the commissioners, I'm assuming are still going to take along with the um South Dakota Association of County officials to the legislature next year. And we're hoping that we can get it passed immediately with an emergency clause.
Back to our own Senator Duhem, Melissa said that she would carry that bill for us too.
We also have um a twenty-three percent increase in vehicles in Pennington County. Um, a lot of those are out of state people, as you're well aware. We have tons and tons of mail. Paper has increased. Um, everything we do, we have to do receipts for motor V. We have to do receipts for real estate. Everything we do is paper generated. So we have to have plenty of paper. The state has not increased our motor V supplies as of yet. I don't know if they're going to. They did take away the duplicate titles, the duplicate registrations that we print out. They told us they were gonna take away that revenue from us, which is about like eight hundred dollars.
Explain that to me, Janet. So this is, so I come in and I need a duplicate title.
Duplicate registration for your vehicle, cause you lost it.
Okay.
We go into the system, we print the duplicate res- registration, we do the work, we hand it to you, we collect the money. The state has said there's nothing in law that says that money's ours and they're the ones that are paying for the registration, which I don't believe because we have to pay a certain portions, portion of that. Even when they do new license plates, that's money that we don't get back to the counties. So really, they're not doing it for nothing, but they think they are. So they took that revenue, which is about eight hundred dollars a year that has to come out of our revenue.
Is that a variable amount on depending on vehicle or is that a?
It's it's two dollars for every vehicle.
Two dollars, okay.
So we we have talked, we would like to see them do some increases. I've been told not to bring any increases to the governor by motor V. But there again, we're doing the work for the duplicate titles. It's ten dollars. We do the work, the state gets the money. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we're doing that they get to keep the money for. So we need to raise, we need to raise the duplicate titles because people will come up and say, I lost my title. Then they'll go home and say, oh, I found my title. Can you take this off? Once a title is generated, we can't refund their money.
So Janet, the uh the new plates, the issuance of the new plates.
Yes.
Whose decision is that? Is that legislative or is that uh?
It it is, it's the state's decision and it did go to the legislature and we tried to extend it out for ten years and compare it to Joe's highway signs. And we were up against three M and we couldn't get it done.
Cause that's for every vehicle that's licensed.
Every, I think this year they're just going to do the motorcycles, the vehicles and the trailers.
What else would be left?
Well, commercial.
Okay.
U-plates, uh handicap plates.
Okay.
Personalized plates. It depends. They set the parameters of what they're going to do.
Okay, okay.
But that will go into effect January first. Anybody that gets their license plates before January first will not get the new set of plates. So if you're going to, your proposal is to do a wheel tax in January, I would suggest that you do the same thing that we did before and we don't renew any of that stuff until January first that expires. We had it, we had something in that bill before, Holly. I'm not sure what it was. Did we?
In the ordinance?
In the ordinance, yeah. We, and we can discuss that later, Holly.
So those that.
But you should.
You can go ahead and register two months, sixty days before.
That's correct.
So did we not have it so that if you registered on November tenth for January or went in to buy your new tags and on November tenth, that the wheel tax already went into effect?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not real sure how we did it.
I think we did.
But I just wanted to make sure that I brought it to your attention and that we checked into it before we did any of that, if that's.
And it didn't affect that many people is what we found out.
So, but I really would prefer not to take out of the budget these employees because I'm hoping we can get them hired because we have to get them hired. We have increased some of our revenues that weren't in our twenty-twenty-two revenues. We've had um problems with out-of-state people calling and emailing my staff, sometimes eight, nine times a day, the same person. And so we have told them that if they send their paperwork in and it's incorrect and we have to send something out to them and they call us and we have to keep continuously pulling that paperwork, we are charging them an extra twenty-five dollars because their paperwork wasn't complete. Because it's taking up the staff, it's taking up the staff time fighting with out-of-state people.
Good job.
So I'm hoping uh I can tell you that the administrative fees are at, and this is just through the end of May. We did project a hundred and twenty-five thousand and they're already to sixty-four thousand. So we should make that without any problems.
Mister Chair, question. So Janet, I guess I don't know it. To be able to do like register a vehicle, could, do you have it online to where they can do it online?
The state has it online.
State has it, but to do motor vehicle for.
Title transfers are not online.
Not, well, you gotta have that in hand.
They can't register, you can register a motor vehicle online and renew your tags. If you're south, if you have a South Dakota driver's license. If you do not have a South Dakota driver's license, you cannot do it.
Okay. So the mailing is really becoming a problem for us. And I, I agree with the twenty-five dollar charge when there's, I I would think a twenty-five charge regardless, but.
Well, and we we have that in state statute, Commissioner. And then if they want it expedited, it's another twenty-five dollars. But if they're emailing us and calling us four and five times a day and not listening to what we're saying, they're taking up our time, which costs the county money. So they have to pay for our time. You know, we had a woman this morning that was mad because she wanted her registration scanned to her. Okay, that's a three-dollar charge. She wasn't gonna pay it. Well, so we told her, I told the employee, well, go ahead and tell her, then you're, you're going to back it all up and you're not sending her registrations. Well, then she agreed to pay it. But everything takes time. It it takes, it takes away from the taxpayers. They'll live. But everything takes time. It, it takes, it takes away from the taxpayers. They'll live in Pennington County. It does. There's lines every day and a lot of them are people that are coming here for the summer, staying overnight. Annette, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it.
I, I got just one comment. And this comes from what happened in our last meeting is I'm open to seeing, listening to how doing some changes in the department could help get the employees in and you know, from my understanding, you wanted to do four tens and do a Friday where they just do the mailroom type thing and I think you guys know your department better than I do and you know what's, you made quite a bit of changes throughout the two years and I think there's been big improvement, but I'm open to listening to what you guys' suggestions are.
The four tens, we have, you know, tried to figure out several different ways that it's going to work for us. It is good for the employees, but it's also what the taxpayers have been asking. At the end of the day, when the other departments are getting ready to leave, we're turning away people because they're, they're wishing that we were there a little bit longer. The lines are before the doors open at eight o'clock, there's lines sometimes past the flagpole. Because they want to get in and get out of there. So for the taxpayers, I believe that it is as a, as a whole, what they would like. I mean, we're, we're taking polls right now of, and Holly can attest to this, we just have dozens and dozens of them. Almost everybody is willing to write what their opinion is. And yeah, we do have some no's in there, but we also have some that say have it opening one night a month till midnight. That's not going to happen. But, but I mean, there's all difference, different opinions, but it's a very small amount that says no because they're taking time off from their work too, you know, to come down there and we've already got the, got the constituents that are standing out there and having to be turned away at the end of the day for those longer times. And then that is what pulls away from our mail. And I think it would be great for the employees to be able to see that there's some progress that's being done on that. You know, we, we might get 25 titles done out of the mail, but there might be 45 that come in that day. So it's a, a constant battle to keep up on those as well. So I think for morale wise, it would be great too. Not all of our employees are going to be able to do that for whatever their reasons are. And we're willing to work with them for that too, so that they can have a flex schedule. Some of the departments are already utilizing that now and we just have not been able to because we're face to face with the public and we need to have a full staff there when the public's there. So I think the, as an overall, we just sent out the check for the employees to send us their opinion on what they, and how they feel it's going to work for them and what they'd like to do. And we're gonna, we're gonna make it work for them for flex, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Edgar.
Electronically, is there anything that you could add kiosks or any other places? Is there, is any other state or even our state doing something that we can be innovative on so people didn't have to stand in line, they could run them through? I know you have some. But the bank, I'll use, for instance, I hated going through the bank and using the kiosk and pushing all that stuff at, at one time and now it's very convenient. So I was more old school. I like talking to that person face to face, that kind of thing. But then it became very convenient. So anything that we could do that, you know, you didn't have to process or legally not have to process in a way that it has to be a hands-on, it seems like it would be well worth the money putting into. So is there anything that as a county that we could do to speed up some of those processes through electronics?
Well, we do have the kiosks. We have one here. There's one at, at the Rushmore Mall. And with the new Department of Revenue, as soon as that's built and open, that's going to be driver's licensing. There's going to be a kiosk there. So they'll have three kiosks.
So is there?
In Pennington County.
Is there any kind of mail machine? Is there any kind of other machines that we could get that we didn't have to do a hands-on that would work a lot more efficiently? Maybe not efficiently is the word because people work hard. In a way that would be more efficient for your department is a good way to put it. I don't know what that is.
We, we have, we have a lot of banks that already pay the taxes. IT has simplified that for us. Annette, Annette, you process the banks, so if you want to.
Yeah, we have the, and we call them the banks, but they're like the huge mortgage companies. They send us an electronic file and then they send us their payment and IT has worked with us to, we have an awesome program that posts it. And, and then we just balance it basically and deposit and we're talking like, you know, well, close this time it was about 22 million. And that saves a lot of time during tax time. We also have online where they can make their payments online. The SSTs, we call them SSTs, they're the self-service terminals, the big yellow ones that you're talking about outside there. That is not something that we can just order and have come in. The state decides how many of those based on population. And then based on use, which is why they went ahead and added another one out of the Department of Motor Vehicle. We've always had that one out up to the mall too. But a lot of the hands-on, the long line that you see upfront is title transactions, which require the original documents. So, and lately we've had original documents that come through that are fraudulent and so that also requires hands-on to take a look to see if we've got the right documents. So I don't know that the state is working on anything to be able to do those kind of things online or to expedite that at all. So we've got our self-service terminal out there. When we, when we have an additional clerk, we're able to have them stand out there to walk the people through because usually you're right, once they get comfortable with it and they see that it's not as, you know, scary as it looks or they get comfortable using it, then they'll continue to use it and know that where the other locations are. And we've, you know, we've got it online, we've got everything, all that information online, but honestly, you know, people just know I need to renew my, I need to renew my tag so they're not, they're not getting that information. The clerks are starting to tell them that as well and we can start handing out things so that they're aware that it's on, online, but.
What I mean by that is like, so the banks, they have people on the line and then you run through. I think if you had something where you didn't have to meet with someone face to face because of some of the abuse and stuff that goes on just standing there and like in the bank, they drive through, they can get some of their stuff done, they talk to a person. They enter their material or their money. It also saves a lot of face to face, meaning can you get online? Can you have monitors like they have that help people that do some of that stuff? I think, like I said, some of it is you can not have to be so face to face with people and some of that stuff where people are yelling and doing certain things. It might be more efficient, I guess. I don't know if that's called face to face, but it's a lot easier to process with not someone. I think it freaks a lot of people out having to do stuff right in front of people too. And some of that, so just, I don't know what that is, but I'm just seeing a lot of people do electronic stuff. It might cost us more at the onset, but in the long run, does it help be efficient? And I don't know if there's, in the future, if there's any drive-through kind of thing for treasurer's office. Maybe that sounds really weird, but some of that processing might work for some of our departments to think about that they don't have to sit there and, and do as much work. It's more typing than it is. I don't know.
The state is looking down the road in the future at not even issuing people titles. Everything will be done electronically. We had a new program that was supposed to start net last November. It didn't come through. We had it, it was supposed to start June 1st. Our understanding now is everything has been pulled. They are not going to do anything with the new program. They're going to wait and go back to the state legislature and see if they can get the money. And all the money they've already stuck into it, they're going to hire somebody else to do it.
That's what I mean.
So that's, that's down the road in the future because right now the losses, we have to look at every piece of paper. And because of the fraudulent titles, they have to be face to face with us or they have to mail it in. And the biggest bulk of the mail is not from the people in Rapid City. It's from out of state people.
And why I say that is because a lot of the bank documents and things have to be face to face and what's that mean face to face? Do you see what I'm saying? You could have people in your building, you could have your people out, you know, I don't know. They have them in different areas of the state even on these banks, but.
But you still have to have the documents there. And the state has to pass a law to allow them to do that. That's the problem.
So Annette.
Yeah.
Let me understand this. When you talked about the banks.
Yes.
So are you saying that, that lien holders on vehicles are now operating similar to what a mortgage company on a home would? Is that, are they collecting those fees?
The ba, the banks are on real estate.
Yes.
So it's just, it's just the real estate. That is, yes, streamlined for these large mortgage companies. They send their money to a third party. That third party collects all the money, receives a file from our office, checks which ones they're going to pay and then sends us an electronic file. When we get the payment for it, then we post all of those. So that saves us hours and hours.
Vehicles in with that and I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, not motor vehicle, but one of the other things that we did that came out of COVID actually is adjusting our lines upstairs so that our newer employees who have learned the basics, we have a faster line transaction for that and we try to go out and work the line to make sure that people are in the right line and you can kind of estimate how long it's going to take for us to cross us through to the end of the day that way. And our newer employees get face to face with the customers a lot sooner. That seems to help them get comfortable with it before they actually do the title transfers and moves the line along a lot farther. Otherwise we'd have, I mean, there's many times that the title line is cleared down to the registered needs office, but if you would also add the, just the renewal or the fast areas, they'd be out the door still. So looks are kind of deceiving the amount of people that come through that door would, is growing and growing.
In those lines a couple of times. Yeah, very positive comments from the people standing in line because of the way you have set that up, so it's very good. Other questions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
One, one question Janet, and I'm not that knowledgeable on this, but the group insurance, I see that really varies a lot percentage-wise from department to department. So on your budget for group insurance, how's that arrived at?
Well, we have a lot of new people that are, are coming on and taking the insurance. They're younger generation.
Okay.
So that, that has a lot to do with it.
And health insurance did go up a bit too, so.
Yeah, we raised the premiums 3%.
So that's just, there's never going to be a standard percentage across the line. That's going to vary from department to department.
Yes, yes, depending on the employee number and that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to get some clarification on that.
And a total shot in the dark for all the departments because we're all trying to hire and you're trying to guess that when, what you do hire, what kind of insurance they're going to take.
Sure.
And you have one person that might be taken single at the beginning of the year, gets married halfway through the year and then has a baby, you know? So it, it is a vari- variable all year long.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Mike Cool, you want to go now?
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I, anticipating that this is going to be a challenging year for the county. We've tried to minimize requested increase, increases. So we're seeking a just $138,000 increase or 2.53%. Overall, our, right now we're not requesting any additional FTEs. We currently have eight positions open. That's a challenge for us. Right now that's our highest priority is to fill those, those slots. So we have, currently we've had, have three custodial positions opened, three building tech positions open and two what we had had in what we call construction specialists. More of our skilled people that we would use for executing project work. So right now that would be one of our highest priorities, filling those. And actually I, my intention is to come back to you here. I've been working with John and HR and would like to seek some increases for our department yet this year to try and help at least get some second looks from departments. It's very difficult to compete against the construction market right now.
Do you find building techs, Mike?
Our building techs would be more of a kind of handyman. They do a variety of things. They do take care of all the grounds, build shelves, move furniture, paint walls. But they technically typically don't have like a carpenter's experience. But they generally do have skills with some, utilizing some tools, so.
And.
Thank you.
I'll just pass on some of the costs of doing stuff. Even if a tech's doing painting, if you had to get someone higher out to do painting these days, it's astronomical, the price. So I mean, that saves a lot of money right there.
Yeah, there's constantly, there's always things to paint.
That's just one area, but I mean.
Yeah. And just right now, just trying to hire anybody in the consultant world or excuse me, in the construction world, just to get them to do, help assist with work is, is a challenge right now. You know, we're, we're having trouble trying to locate people that can help us out through this summer. We can probably get some people on board going into the fall and winter, but through the summer it's going to be a challenge. Right now, our, our personnel, personnel budget line did not increase much at all. That's mainly due to we've lost a number of hired paid employees, so through this. And I have a, a number of them that are, are close to retirement age too, so that's another concern. That is our institutional knowledge, so that's a growing concern if we can't. It'd be nice to get some younger people in that have those, some of those skills that we can begin to develop into a little further in, of knowledge in our, our facilities and our services we provide.
So your decrease on supplies and materials, is that all because of the sheriff's office?
For the most part, yes. That, that decrease, we're transferring 126,000, I think. 23,000, excuse me, to the sheriff's budget to help cover that. That seemed like the best way to currently try and manage that. At purchasing of those materials, so. That was something we worked at the, out at the end of this last year.
So utility, what are your largest utility relative to utility expenses? Which one do you see increasing probably the largest? Is it natural gas and?
Natural gas is a big thing right now. We currently, for this year, we've nearly used up our budget at, at this time for natural gas, so we'll be, have to be drawing from some of our other portions there. So we've actually doubled that number for, for this next year. We do purchase some, what helps us somewhat is we do purchase in the fall for the, for this next winter, for the end of this year. We try and get on a contract to buy natural gas ahead of time so that we're able. uh natural gas ahead of time so that um we're able to moderate that, that, that change in cost. But it has, even at that time when we entered the contract last, last fall, the numbers had already gone up a lot, so.
Do you think they're willing in the future to continue to do that, to bid it out that far?
Uh, so far, uh, you know, the continued, whether buildings and grounds would continue to, to try to purchase it that way. Well, you know, it's a, uh, in the past, it hasn't, you know, for some time, it hasn't made a lot of difference. These types, types of years, it can make a, a difference, so. Uh, it's a little bit of roll of the dice, if you, you buy it and then the prices fall way off, and we're, we're paying more. But that, it's, that's been very rare that that's happened.
Thank you.
Quick question, or quick comment, you know, I, I, I think every department's a little bit different, but what I'm seeing out in the maintenance and, and construction field is, a lot of what's happening is people are coming back to where they're working, just as, as you, as Janet said, just a while ago. Someone's going to move to another job, they say they're going to pay this amount, and so their current employers up, up their wages. I think that's why it's going to be good that you're working with John, and I think you need to find what a fair wage is for you, for the, the work that we're doing here. Not, not to try and outbid what's out there, because sooner or later, things are going to stabilize. But uh I just caution people about we've, I've seen that several times in our industry that I'm in, where we work, where they come back and say next person though is going to pay more, so they're going to stay and take, take that leave. I think we have a lot to offer.
Yeah, it's finding that balance of what, what we can offer, uh, we will not be on the front, front edge of, of, of competing against it. The challenge is, is right now that there is, you know, for a, I have a plumber that could be making twelve more dollars an hour. But we're, and we're not going to approach that. You know, trying, trying to, you know, he's, he's happy here. Uh, this is just an example, though, of situation that does, when, when there's that kind of disparis- disparity uh in pay, it's hard for not them, them not to consider that, but we have, you know, we try to be very flexible with how, allowing people to have time off uh when they want it, uh, that, that's a challenge for anybody working for a construction company, you can't do that. So there are some things that we can offer that help offset those big pay.
I think you're absolutely right, because I worked with a guy just the other day, an electrician, who says, I wanted today off and I couldn't get it. So I mean, the flexibility does outweigh uh their being overworked.
Yeah.
So.
Chairman. So my worry is, Mike, your supplies and materials, tell me what supplies and materials in your business is.
Excuse me?
Four, four-two-six supplies and materials, you've only went up thirty-six thousand. Is that like your cleaning and all that kind of stuff or not, in your paper and?
Um, well, the, the biggest reason why that one hasn't um it, it's actually gone down um is uh because we're shifting a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to the sheriff's budget.
But you don't think, tell me what supplies and materials are for then?
Uh, our supplies and materials are um, uh, our, our, our custodial supplies, everything we buy for supplying all those restrooms and, and such, but uh, they're also our maintenance supplies, that is something that we have increased in twenty, asked, asked for a twenty-five percent increase in, in that line actually, or, or that subcomponent of that.
Okay, so um you don't think any of that's going up, or it hasn't showed this year that it's going up enough that you've actually decreased it?
Well, like I said, uh, we are actually increasing our numbers, it's because of that shift in the uh budget to the, the sheriff's budget that, that's actually end, ending up being a, a decrease overall.
Still going up about seventy-five thousand.
Okay, and then your utilities as well? So you only have one million, three thirty-two, sixty and twenty-two, and then you have one million, four fifty-five. And for me, even in our business, everything has doubled, like you said. Then that's not really increasing.
We're not seeing any, we're not seeing the cost increase yet relative to um power, power is our biggest one, and we're not seeing big increases yet on that side of things.
So is government charged the same, or do we get?
We get better rates overall, um, uh, because of some of the things that we do, like um ice storage, uh, we we uh, in order to cool our buildings, we produce um ice at off-peak hours. So during the night, we produce ice and we use that for cooling during the day.
Just use a lot of green technology to keep those um utility bills not as high. So it's not like mine that they went from a thousand to two thousand or eighteen hundred. My, uh, like you said, uh, natural gas went up, water, sewage, everything else, so. For me, that, maybe that's the difference, but I just figured on utility, that's pretty low of an increase.
Well, it is something we can check again, we do have a meeting with uh our Black Hills Energy rep at the uh beginning of the year, uh, just to kind of go through things, and we, and at that time, they were indicating to us that they weren't going to, were going to see substantial changes, but.
Okay, and your capital costs, a lot of equipment and things are really going up. Um, as we've seen, uh, just listening to Joe, um, thirty thousand for this huge equipment uh differences, even though we get, you know, government costs, um, you went up twenty-six thousand and, and that's going to cover it?
Well, we, we're trying, we, we do need to replace some vehicles and stuff, but we, uh, our service vehicles are used, we buy used equipment for, for our service vehicles all the time, we don't buy uh new things, we buy new um, equipment like uh skid steer loaders or something like that. Uh, we're, we're not looking at purchasing anything like that at this time, so.
Are you finding used has went up a lot too, though?
Excuse me?
Have you found that used is going up a lot as well?
It, it is, um, um, those costs are increasing, um. I guess, I don't know if your, if your question is, if, if we're trying to get to a flat rate amount we're asking every, for every year.
How your equipment was faring at this point, meaning if you need replacements or anything else, because those costs even for used have went up a lot. So I didn't know if you were looking at the future of, of replacing or needing anything that.
We are trying to, we, we're actually, we're, we're still trying to replace two pieces of equipment, uh, you know, by a van and another pickup this year yet. And then we'd like to buy, replace one more vehicle this next year.
And then your increase, so your capital cost, you use some of your accumulated billing for that, because your increase in machinery and equipment's only twenty-six-nine? Decrease, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, we, we had asked for an increase uh, uh, last year, once again, I guess I should, would, would state that our goal overall was to try and moderate the, uh, uh, what we're asking for this year and, and, and doing that, so.
So how do you pay for those things that you just asked for and still have a decrease?
We're asking for just, we're just looking at doing one um, um.
Vehicle this year?
This year.
Okay.
So that fifty thousand would cover that?
Yep.
Can I throw something in there? I mean, good point, Deb, but we just replaced two of our vehicles and, with brand new ones, Ford has got a new truck out for about fifty, forty-five to fifty thousand, brand new. And for like buildings and grounds, they have the generator hook up in the back. That's very economical, you can't hardly touch a pickup, four-wheel drive for, and it's brand new. Ju- just, I might, I can get some little bit of the information for you, Mike, I mean, that's something to, to consider to see a price that, like that for a new vehicle. You know, it's, it's your basic truck, but that's all you need.
Yeah.
But you have a generator plug-in on the back for maintenance, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Mike, could you just uh give me an idea with four-twenty-two services and fees? What does that include? What type of services and fees? I see an increase uh forty-two thousand, three sixty-six, I just wondered what those uh services would be if you.
Um, those are actually typically, that, that, that will be uh um, some additional fees for uh our, where we spread our um, our security access control systems and such, we've been, generally been working on, on uh have a one-year warranty essentially on all of that stuff, so we're looking at getting a service agreement in place to cover that uh, um, those um new systems. In the past, that had been a part of the sheriff's budget, but um.
Okay.
So, so there's a little bit, there's a.
Security basically.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
So is planning, want to do theirs?
Trying to help you out.
Sorry, Kathy's out, so we need to.
You're sitting behind Mike, I didn't see.
It's all good. Good morning, commissioners. Um, I tried to stick with, I tried to increase my revenue, so I was more in line with what I was making. Um, last year, I did budgeting the way that Donna showed me how. Um, so this year, I tried to kind of come into what I'm making, um, I think we're going to see a decrease next year a little bit, um, because of the, what the interest rate on mortgages currently is. I think we'll see still purchases and, and building going strong, but I think the refinances are going to take a dive or kind of stall out, um, so I see that happening. My vital records um are seeing an increase this year from where we were last year, so I've increased that a little bit. Um, I did just a, I typically see a ten percent increase in my maintenance fees and contracts with my copiers and printers. Um, I decided to in twenty-twenty-one, which I did after budgeting for twenty-twenty-two had started. Um, I'm leasing a copier printer versus purchasing. Um, so the, the maintenance and the ink and stuff is included in that, so that is why there is such a big increase for my leases, I never had a, or rentals, I never had that before. Um, so there's that, and then I'm trying to be cost efficient and not have to come to you for a supplement.
So by leasing these copiers and so forth, when these things decide not to work, they decide not to work, so that's pretty much where we're going, so. If there's a problem, somebody, you can call them, let tech go get there and fix it, repair it, give it up, okay.
Yep, yep.
I just want to clarify, because a lot of times people think, well, why not buy one and save yourself all that? Well, it does for the buck, maybe the first year, maybe, but.
Once the warranty is up, then you're, you're paying the cost for maintenance, whereas over the, I have like a five-year lease on that.
Yeah.
They pay the maintenance and all of that, and it costs me actually less than what a yearly purchase amount would be.
Yeah. Thanks, Adrian.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So this question, I guess, would be for every department, especially the ones in this particular building, but how do you guys uh utility service, so, I mean, you're not individually, individually metered, so how do you?
Right, um, mine is actually for my cell phone, comes out of that account.
Okay.
On my office cell phone, and then I do pay a um network access fee to the state for my vital records program. I have four computers that we utilize for that, and so I have to pay an access fee for each of those computers.
Yeah, just that, I got a better understanding what utility is, I mean.
Yep.
I thought you'd go read the meter and.
No, mine includes those two items.
So, Audra, on the filing, recording, and transfer fees, um I'm not sure I understand what happened in twenty-twenty-two, if that's actually gone down to that one point two, or if you anticipate that it will remain at that.
Well, I adopted it and I did budgeting, how Donna showed me how to do budgeting. So it was my first year of doing budgeting, and so it was kind of a, a guesstimate on my part.
Okay.
So.
So at this point, where do you think you're at with that?
Um, well, I am two thousand dollars, two thousand documents behind where I was last year. Um, revenue-wise, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I am down from, from where I was last year as well. Um, so I, I, like I said, I'm trying to come up to where I should be, but I'm still very new at playing with these numbers, so I am trying my best.
Okay, so when you say two thousand documents short, uh, is, is that just a variety of documents, or is there a?
That is a variety of documents, yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Other questions?
Uh, not relative to this, but the four, you know, the four-day work weeks.
Yes.
So I, I got a phone call from the title company that would prefer that you be open on Friday, so if, if it comes to that, uh, how do we work around that?
So if the building closes, I would choose to close my office. Um, we are not behind to the point where as planning or Janet, or not that planning's behind, but planning can use that Friday for more efficient getting, you know, stuff done that they can't get done with the public here. And Janet would use it to catch up, I don't need that time for my staff. Um, I am looking at getting my records put online, but it's going to take me some time to do that, I have curative work to do. Um, they used to include social security numbers on mortgages, um, a power of attorney is different real estate documents that I have to have redacted before I can put my records online, so I'm in the process of working on that. Um, but until I have that fully done, I can't put my stuff online, so that would be an option for people to access my records if the building is closed.
Okay, I just, uh, under the circumstances, Audra, uh, would it be advisable for you to go visit uh, with the title companies and?
I have visited with them both.
You have?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
So one is willing to work with us, um, said that they can, can figure out a way to still run with us close four days a week, and one was very adamant, and the answer was no right away, so.
Fifty-fifty.
Yep, so.
Is that just because they don't have access to the files, or is that, what, what's his reasoning for absolute no?
Um, they come, so it's, it's the way they, they update their files, they update their files in our office every day. Um, I am not going to try and tell them how to do their stuff, but I think there are other ways that they can, or they could try to do things in a different way. Um, but it's, again, they're old school, or they're this, and they're maybe not just open-minded to trying something new.
So, would, would a Friday compared to a Monday make any difference at all?
Um, no, either, either one would be fine, sometimes we're really busy on a Monday, and sometimes we're really busy on a Friday. Or we're really busy on a Wednesday, so.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Audra?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audra.
Now with planning, Mike.
Good morning, commissioners, Brittany Malater, Planning Director. I just kind of want to go over a couple of things, changes in our budget. Um, under the salaries and wages, we have a couple potential reclassification of employees um, that's possible next year at their anniversary dates. Um, one of the biggest things under the four-twenty of their current expenditures, um, the city did reach out to many of the Tracket users, and they are going to require that um, we cost share with them now with the Tracket system. Uh, we have been using the system since two thousand thirteen, um, without contributing any funds to the city. Um, so now, um, it's a little over eleven thousand dollars um for our share, or a portion of it. Uh, so that has added under that services and fees. Um, one of the other items is the traveling conferences, I did add some extra funding in there, um, with the intent of some of the commissioners actually attending the Western Planners Conference uh, with Jason and I, um, because I think it would be a good idea for some of the commissioners to come. I know meeting and seeing some other entities and seeing some of that is uh, good information, just to learn that our planning world is, we're all the same, kind of in the same boat right now with a lot of the growth. Um, so with that, um, we did ask for two, um, employees also. Um, just with our current level of intake and permits and um, building permits, conditional use permits, um, on all of those types of things. Um, one of them was a three-quarter time administrative assistant and the other was an assistant planner. Um, the idea with a three-quarter time, um, administrative assistant would be to help out with the files. Um, just to give you an idea, in twenty twenty, we had thirty-one C R P files, and twenty twenty-one, we had seventy-three. And all of those files typically have to go through our admin assistant. Um, she puts those files together, um, scans those files in, so it would help, um, her with some of those filing. Um, and as you know, the agenda, the number of items on the the agenda has increased from about ten or fifteen to about thirty. Um, so we're seeing quite a bit more uh, intake in permits and building permits. Uh, with the assistant planner, um, that would be mainly for building permit intake. So it would give some of the more, um, I guess, senior planners, uh, the ability to write the staff reports, meet with people um, on their requests, because a lot of these requests are getting much more complicated.
So Chairman, just one thing.
Pressure, I don't.
It only says that you're, it says you're not increasing. Where am I? It says nine point seven-five in twenty twenty-two and nine point seven-five in twenty-three. Am I on the wrong page or? No, Deb, in the front of your book, there's a tab called new employees. That's the spreadsheet for all the departments that are requesting F T Es, and her two are included on that tab. But they were instructed to prepare their budgets with only the current employees that we have.
Well, the other ones had the same, and they haven't increased their budgets because of it, like the state's attorney and the public defender. I thought they had, said they had increased it. And that they haven't yet.
No, none of the new F T Es are included in the budgets.
Okay. I thought.
Well, I think Mark misspoke. He did say, when Gary asked if it was included, he said yes, but the funding is not in their budgets.
Yeah, it's separate.
In their books.
Okay.
I just asked him on the number of employees, if it was included in it or not.
Right, but the one that he was speaking of new is not.
Yeah.
No, because that that was earlier in the year when he reverted back to that, that was a different.
And for some reason I.
Different request. We didn't approve one one attorney.
It's a little confusing, though, when you're doing a budget, and then usually we had, if it's new F T E, how much that would increase their budget. So I guess I was thinking that the F T Es, like always, were included in on it.
No, it's on that main front spreadsheet, and you can see the total cost to the county for those positions.
And that wasn't included on the four-point.
No.
Uh, six increase already.
No.
No fun?
No.
Nope. Thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. Um, just to go back to that, um, the administrative assistant would be around twenty-five thousand five hundred. Um, it'd be unbenefited. Uh, we currently have a three-quarter, um, employee, and we have found that it works really well in our department. Um, and I think it works really well for the flexibility, um, in hiring that position, because they can come to work after, you know, drop off for school, and they can leave before pickup for school. And it's a great way to kind of find that balance, um, to get employees or have that flexibility to get new employees in. Um, so it's worked out well for our office with that point seven-five employee, because it doesn't, it's unbenefited. Uh, and then for the assistant planner, that would be about fifty-eight thousand five hundred, and that's with benefits. Um, and that would be primarily for building permit intake, and then again, having the other senior planners work uh, some of the other more difficult projects. Um, as far as our revenues, uh, last year, our revenues were significantly higher than they were in years prior, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that wasn't with really a significant increase in fees. That's just um, with just the number of permits and the number of applications that we had received. And that does not include the sixty thousand dollars that we give to Highway. Um, so, you know, that four hundred and three thousand that we collected last year did not include the sixty thousand. So we actually collected four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars last year, um, without any increase in major increase in our fees, our fee structure, so.
One thing I was surprised, I looked at this, was the tattoo licenses.
Yes.
That goes through your office.
It does. Um, our office, our ordinance enforcement officer does all of the inspections for the tattoos, even in city limits. So in Box Elder city limits, Hill City city limits, Rapid City city limits, yes.
Okay.
We've got one on every corner now.
Yes. So, and that does include, um, anyone that does permanent makeup, any of that kind of um, work. So there's quite a few of them in the county.
Tell me what the water protection fees are.
Those are the operating permit. So when you pump and inspect, that's that twenty-dollar fee for the pump and inspection of the septic tanks.
Okay. So so to all, so to all the districts that have served more than fifteen people, maybe included in that, the water protection fees?
No, this is just for the septic fee, just that pump and inspect. So when they do the pump and inspect and you issue the operating permit, it's a twenty-dollar fee. That's that twenty-dollar fee.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so the medical marijuana, is that in here anywhere? I mean, does that have an impact on revenue or any other?
That would just fall under that permit fees, the collected permit fees, under three twenty-four, sixteen oh four, that top line. And we did increase that somewhat.
Twenty-one actual was nearly three hundred and thirty thousand in there.
Mm-hmm.
So do you know where you're at on the twenty twenty-two? Is that going to be considerably higher than what you had projected?
Um, we are actually tracking. I think I actually have that.
I'm just looking that up.
That was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from, in actual, from twenty to twenty-one.
My computer just went, no. I know we were close. Tracking. Um, because this year, I think to date, um, we've done thirty-three C U Ps to date, and we did seventy-three in twenty twenty-one. P U Ds, we did ten. We've done ten to date, twenty-one in twenty twenty-one, variances fifteen, thirty-six in twenty twenty-one. We've done twenty-one rezones so far and only did thirty-five in twenty twenty-one, and those are all permit fees that we collect. Um, right now, we have collected two hundred and five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two.
Over two hundred and five thousand, and the whole year, you anticipated about two hundred thousand.
Right, and that does not include the sixty thousand that we already gave to, um, Highway. So when we, the first sixty thousand that we collect in permit fees, we give to Highway for the drainage maintenance fund.
Right.
And then this is, so we've actually collected through our office, two sixty-five, sixty of it went to the drainage maintenance funds, and then the two oh five is.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So if if it, does it seem to run fairly consistently month to month, or is there first part of the year heavier on that than than the later part of the year?
I would say the construction season, so that April, May to October.
Okay.
So the first part of the year is a little slower than, um, the end.
So you've maybe, you've maybe collected the bulk of it at this point in time for the for the year.
Um, we still have July, August, and September.
Okay. Okay.
Um, we still have quite a bit.
So do you, so do you think the proposed amount you have for twenty-three is still fairly accurate, or do you think?
It might be a little low.
Okay.
Conservative.
Mr. Chair. Ron brought up, uh, the cannabis permits and so forth, and I guess I'm kind of curious to, I've I've finally got to see firsthand how this is working out. When you guys come back and give you a report on how you track it from seed to da-da-da.
Field sale.
And the security and stuff, because Box Elder's got one going now. It's going to be, I think it's further along than probably anything that's in so far since it's passed. So monitoring that, I believe, is good. You know, I don't remember all the details in our ordinance when we went in. I know you guys did some hard work with that, but and the fees and the processes, but I have a feeling there's going to be a lot more work to it than. I think once it gets re-refined and you you've done it once or twice, but I tell you what, there's a lot of work into.
Well, we only have one C U P that's approved right now. Um, they're working through their development plan, um, submittal. Uh, their holdup right now is their water right. So they're waiting to work through the state water management board for their water right. They were originally going to do an individual water right, and now they're working on a community water right for that whole area. So it's kind of slowed down that process a little bit. Um, that whole area is owned heavy industrial. Um, there has been some talk of adding a manufacturing facility in that area, too. It's just, they're they're waiting on the water right, essentially. I think once that water right comes in that area.
So you you pretty much only see maybe one, so it's you'll deal with it when it comes up.
Is it multiple applicants for the water rights, or is it one?
So originally, it was just going to be an individual well, just for that sys, for that business. Now they're looking at that whole area doing just a, basically like a community water system, and then supplying that whole industrial area. So they're waiting on that water right and working through that process. But that's the only application that's gone through the office so far. I do think the water and water right for the cultivation facilities are the kind of the whole, the sticking point for it, so.
No, I'm just seeing firsthand, so I'm just kind of shocked how much power it's you know, they're putting out in, like you said, the water and pH levels and I've asked about the byproduct. What are you doing with the byproduct? And they're telling me there is no byproduct. We use everything. So, you know, but I'm just, I'm learning.
Adams County will be good for you guys to visit, especially if they have time to show you some of their marijuana.
Yeah, I think.
Rules and regs are, that's why we mimic it. Actually, Jason and Brittany and Megan did a great job at mimicking them. But it's pretty intense once you look at it. And and the big cultivating areas, and they don't put signs on their stuff, they're cultivating, uh, buildings and stuff. That way, um, you're less likely to get robbed.
Okay, any other questions for Brittany? Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Lori, do you mind if we hold you off until one o'clock?
Then I can do it in five minutes.
No, that's fine with me. Commissioner, okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, coming up.
It's going to take longer to find you your tab.
Good morning, commissioners. Lori Wager, I T department. I'm the last one for the day, right?
What's that?
Am I the last one? Yep.
The last presenter of the day, not the last discussion.
Oh. Um, I feel like I explained our budget pretty well throughout the narrative, um, our F T Es. We did not increase anything this year. Uh, we hired three new people towards the end of last year. Um, we're watching to see how that rolls through this year, and so far, so good. Um, our operations budget increased slightly. Our biggest increase was in our payroll line item. Our reserves, we did one of our projects that we had scheduled for this year. We're planning on doing a couple of switches yet this year that will come out of our reserves. Next year, we're planning on doing our network core switch will be a larger chunk of money, not too bad, though. We had applied for a grant last year and received it, and we got that grant money. I believe both of them came in this year. Um, that's not too much else to talk about. Everything's rolling pretty good in I T.
So your your cover letter was written a month ago. It said that, uh, you have hope by the end of the summer to have buildings and grounds off of the.
I haven't checked with them, because it's not July yet. And the last time I checked with them, they said in July. So I'm waiting till about next week.
Okay.
To see how they're doing.
Okay, so what does that mean for both you and for them?
For us, not much, because they haven't real, been really super active on requesting any changes on the software that we have. It just means that they'll be more stable on a new software and be supported by another company. So so far over the last year, we haven't seen them ask for this or have this fixed, because they were told that they need to get off that, the old software.
Okay, so the software they're going to is the same that's being used by Highway, is that correct?
Yep, Pub Works.
Is that the only two departments that are on that?
Yes.
Okay.
On Pub Works. Public Defenders is working on getting off. Um, I'm pushing kind of hard on them. Covid kind of hit hard, and it really sold that company down on getting our, that our department onto them. Um, hopefully within the next, I think they're scheduled to be totally on it by August.
Okay. So the state's attorney's office?
State's attorneys, they're on Zerker. I heard Mark say something about they're the only attorney office on Zerker. That was the first I heard about it when I was listening this morning, so I don't know quite what their plan is.
So you don't support that one?
Mm-mm. We're only there in, just if there's something that Zerker wants us to check on or, you know, hooking something up or, very minimal.
Okay.
We're still working with Tyler Technologies, um, Cindy, I, Deb, um, Grote, and D O E. We are all on with a group that watches them progress and discuss how we need things done on the new software. And hopefully will nobody, I would think by the end of this year, it's got to be getting closer. So that'll be kind of exciting to go off, because we'll still have some work to do, like Annette mentioned earlier, the bank system. They won't have anything like that. So we'll have to figure out how to integrate what we do with our banks to get them posted on the new software.
Okay, so on the Zerker system, do the courts also use that? Does the state use that system, do you know?
That is used by the sheriff's office. I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that one was, um, the sheriff's office chose that software. There was, what was the one that they had before that?
New World.
New World, yes. They were on New World for a while, then they went to Zerker, and that's where they're at today.
Okay. Questions for Lori?
I do. So Lori, um, I guess I'm I'm just going to ask you about how how are you doing with what you're doing with your hours, with your employees, and and your work environment? I've always noticed from from the very beginning, you guys over there in I T got quite a bit of team building together. I mean, you have Chili A, you have Pie Day, you have I mean, not not to say that that's true, but that that's something that you guys are able to take some time and bring your your team together and 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 you talked at the last, the meeting that we had, that you already implemented some different changes. I mean, I think you guys have been very creative of trying to to work through this problem, because I T is a very hard department, um, to get filled with, there's a lot of people paying a lot more. So I think, I, well, I guess I just wanted to highlight, you've done, you guys have done some great things.
Thank you. Um, right now, we're we're, we are working four tens for the ones that want to. We have two employees that don't want to, and myself and Mike. We don't, we work the eight-hour shifts, Monday through Friday, along with the two other employees. Um, if this four tens comes through, um, we will make sure that we cover the hours that are designated. Right now, they're kind of doing a little bit of flexing, you know, trying to say, okay, if I just take a half an hour and then I leave at five thirty. Well, if the off, if the, um, county is open till six, we need to figure out how to support until six o'clock. So we will figure those items out if that comes around. If it does not come around, I'm seriously considering and have discussed with the employees about keeping our four tens, because they really like it. Even though it was very hard for me to accept, because I'm kind of old-school. Even though it was very hard for me to accept because I'm kind of old school, you work Monday through Friday eight to five. You know, so, okay, we gotta start thinking of other items, other ways to make people happy. I told them, get creative. I actually just sent an email out yesterday and asked them. What what do you guys like about it? Do you not like it? What's, you know, what would you like to see changed? Um, be creative, throw at me. One guy come back and says, I would just like to stay five. Eight hours, five days a week. I said, so you're not gonna get any more creative than that? Well, like, what do you mean? I said, well, I said, you're a software developer. If we're closed on Friday. And you still wanna work eights, you could work eights Monday through Thursday and work remote on Friday. Or work nines Monday through Thursday and work remote four hours on Friday. I I said, if that's what you'd like to do is stay eights, I said, I really don't want you in the office on Friday if we're closed because we really probably wouldn't need you. But if you wanna work remote, that would work too, so. Just trying to get creative with it and making sure that, you know, we have a couple of people that don't wanna work, um, tens right now. One just that doesn't appeal to him and the other one, he has to pick his child up from daycare, so that's how it works for him.
But you're making it work.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. I told you five minutes.
Well, you were longer than the five minutes. So we're gonna hold that against you.
Right on the button.
So John, will you be available to come back after one o'clock? Um, talk a little bit about employees, talk a little bit about maybe, uh, like Lori just mentioned. Uh, you know, that she's asking her employees to become creative. Uh, maybe you know of other departments that are doing that and what kind of response and are they sharing that with you or those kind of things? You ensure that with us after lunch?
Should I? Yeah, I'll be here.
I take a motion to, uh, break for lunch, come back at one o'clock.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, and they gave a same eye.
Eye opposed.
Motion carried. We are ready to come back into session. Kevin, do you wanna be first?
Young member, we all own casuals hearing devices.
Good afternoon, Kevin Carley, Director, Peyton County ESCC. I was, I had set this afternoon aside to work on my budget talking points, and so I was just getting started when Holly came in, so. This is the bridge.
So you can practice on us.
So, so.
And if it doesn't work out, then you can request to come back tomorrow.
Yes, yes, with updates. Yeah, um. Uh, as you see the, in the letter that we submitted, um. Uh, we're looking at it, what we're requesting is a total increase in our budget this year of five point five six percent from twenty twenty-two. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-five of that is due to, uh, i- is what the increase is. Of that, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two thousand is increases in wages or rollups that have already been approved, uh, by the commission. And we have a fifteen thousand dollar increase on the operation side of the budget and. Those, that increase in the operational side is due to the state authorizing a six percent cost of living, uh, increase in my wages. Um, since I'm a state employee, my wages come from the operational side of the budget instead of the personal services side of the budget. And also we've made some adjustments, uh, for fuel. Uh, and other services that we've seen, we project an increase in annual services. Uh, other than that, we didn't request anything additional on the operations side of the budget. Uh, we're not requesting any additional FTEs this year. Uh, however, we are working on our five-year plan and just due to our projections of projections of growth, probably. This time next year, when we start talking about twenty twenty-four, we'll probably be. You'll probably see me here asking for some FTEs, but we'll see how that goes. Uh, projected revenues, uh, for twenty twenty-three are two million, uh. And twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, that's an increase of just a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and that's because we have a. Two percent projected increase in our nine-one-one surcharges. And we automatically increase some of our contract services three percent every year. And also, uh, Department of Public Safety, City of Box Elder, anybody that we c- contract with for dispatch services, we automatically increase their contracts three percent every year. So that's why we've got a slight increase in revenue there. Uh, the radio tower budget now, we never used to have, the radio tower budget used to be included in our normal budget until the auditor pointed out that we. Can't pay for radio tower expenses out of our normal budget, so if you recall last year or twenty twenty-one, we split that, uh, into a separate budget. Uh, and there is an increase in that budget that this year, just because, um. That we've got three new towers that we brought online June second that we're responsible for. So we've got a total of five towers now that we're maintaining instead of two. We have the one at Stevens High School and up on Elkville. Uh, we brought the towers at Rockerville, Hill City, Keystone Online, Ju- June second, and. Remember, that's a split revenue with the state. The state provided the radio equipment. We built and maintained the actual sites themselves and the actual towers themselves. So that's where, um, that's where that is, and that increases just strictly for, and the increase in, uh. In utilities that might occur along with adding those three, those three additional towers. So that's what I have in case you have any questions.
So Kevin, I'm curious. Uh, prior to two years ago, it was probably pretty easy to, uh, I'm not saying easy. But there was probably a system to being able to project five years out, what that mean is. How do you do that now?
Well, um, what I'm doing is, um, I rely mainly on, I'm using data from the last five years of growth. And we're gonna look at projections for increase in population. Visiting with the police department and the sheriff's office and the fire department, what they project their growth is gonna be as far as calls for service and manpower increases. And additional programs that they may have, and we'll try to put that all together and gain a picture for what we think the next five years is gonna look like.
Gotta be considerably different, I would project.
I think so, just, well, we had put a five-year plan together a few years ago and we're already having to to update it because, uh, you know, population growth. And both the fire department and the police department received in- increases in power and manpower. Last year, and they, I believe they're gonna receive those again this year. We've had the co-response program for the police department and some other programs that also require us to increase our dispatch services for them, so just in the last couple of years, we've seen a big. Spike in the growth, and you did approve one FTE for me this year in twenty twenty-two. Um, which helped, uh, a lot. And, uh, but I would, I would think probably, you know, we're gonna. I'm guessing, um, within the next five years, we're probably gonna need to add a few, I mean, we're three to five more possibly. So City of Box Elder with their expansion, they've increased their officers quite a bit and their calls for service have in- have increased quite a bit, and that's really where we're gonna see our biggest growth. And they currently share a channel with the sheriff's office, but radio traffic on that channel is getting busy enough that we're gonna have to split, probably split the City of Box Elder out. Put them on their own channel. Um, which complicates things because then. Uh, the dispatcher has to monitor, one dispatcher has to monitor two channels instead of one, so now they're all on the same channel. They can't talk at once and she can. Or he can hear all the traffic when they, when we split them into two channels, now they can both talk at the same time, so we can miss traffic, so. We're probably looking at adding some dispatch staff to maintain that and. It will benefit us. Not only will that person be able to monitor that channel, but they'll also be able to answer nine-one-one calls and other things that we're seeing an increase in, so. I think that's what we're looking at.
Okay. Questions? Appreciate it, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, good job.
Thank you.
Well, John and Holly, you want to flip it coming here or?
Go right ahead, Mr. John.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources.
What I suggest, John, is that we actually. Go through your budget and I I suspect even before we go to Holly, there may be a number of questions.
Good. I've got a lot of data to share, so that would be welcome. Okay, so the the budget for human resources is very similar to the past years. Um, big change that we're asking for this year is the ability to purchase, um, software. Again, you'll. Hear that kind of recurring theme through many of the departments or offices, I think, today with regard to, um, operational needs. With ours, we currently use, um, Relias Learning, we use Perform, uh, for management. We have, uh, actually the ability to access NeoGov Learn, uh, which is also in their training and development. Um, through SDPAA in a partnership with the state of South Dakota. Those two programs, Relias and, uh, Learn, give our employees access to a number of different personal development. Software skills, leadership, uh, safety, all kinds of really good, um, product. Uh, to help them improve their personal skills and to work in a safer manner. Those contracts that we have, with the exception of Learn, so again, Perform, um, Relias, uh, Insight, which is our recruiting software. They all have provisions for three to five percent increase annually. Um, they've projected that we'll see a three percent increase, so I've included that in the budget numbers for next year. What we're asking, uh, as well with software, um, is to be able to purchase an additional software part of. So NeoGov or GovernmentJobs.com, uh, is their parent company, but NeoGov is what we use for, um, recruiting. It's what we use for the onboarding right now, um, to some extent. Basically, we can put in, uh, the data person was hired and the amount of money they were. Promised with regard to their job offers. That same package, uh, NeoGov also has another number of different modules that help facilitate. Different types of things for government employment. Uh, what we're asking to do is add the HR database, which is the HRAS or HR Core. We're asking to be able to add the onboarding and the E-forms modules from that same company. What it does is bring a continuous package from the time you recruit until you get them hired and onboarded. Uh, so that they can actually start accessing data themselves. There's a self-service component to this as well. But it gives us, uh, as the employer, visibility to employee history, movement, um, the things that they do. Whether it be development or even insurance costs, dependent information, all of those pieces would be a part of this program. It, through the onboarding process and the E-forms module, they actually have information. Right now. The welcome to the county, uh, comes in multiple manners. Uh, each department sends out an email, HR sends out an email, we send video links, we send information about. Our compensation, our handbook, those types of things. What we're finding is that. Information doesn't always get to them in a manner that they can use with regard to their, uh, accepting the job and actually coming to the county. There's something wonky with the email system. We haven't been able to figure out what it is, and this has been going on for almost two years. Where a lot of the emails that come from county addresses go into spam. Um, or just never show up. Some of the people that receive these have an automatic spam filter that just deletes spam. Um, so there's been times over the course of the last couple of years, people that have received offers or should be receiving offers. Don't have the data, so we'll call just to verify, hey, have you received this? And then we have to find another way to get the data to them. This onboard module simplifies that. The the messages come from that module. It welcomes them. All of the data that they need before they start is available to them up to a month before they would actually start as a county employee. Um, so it gives them the handbook, it gives them our policies, it gives them our statement of ethics. Uh, it gives them the offer information, benefit information, a lot of that, they can actually. Do themselves before they come to the orientation class. And we'll have all that completed. Um, one of the challenges we have, um, not only with the communication part, but is getting the data completed. Uh, we had another one, actually it was Janet's, um, new person that did start yesterday, not the one that didn't show up. But he didn't wanna complete any of the required employment forms until he could show them to his spouse. Now, these are for some of the very basic, uh, this is my name, this is my social, I don't have any, um. Uh, conflicts of interest with regard to employment with the county, you know, by business aspects or what have you. Those are challenging, uh, by having this data available to them before they would actually arrive. They could actually have that completed and or reach out with questions before they get here. Uh, this would include video links, it would include information about the department, their work schedules, uh, a number of different pieces would be available. From the HR, uh, information side of it, and Holly and I were visiting a little bit prior to this. We don't have visibility into any FTE data, so I know that's been an item of interest today. The only information I have from departments when they need something filled is they'll contact me and say, hey, could you open a posting for me? And I do that, and if I see that the posting has been open for a month or two, then we'll actually look for alternate places that we can post those those openings. Um, I was sharing earlier, like, for example, with PDO, last year, we posted the PDO attorney positions. On five different state bar associations so that those professional organizations had visibility, they could actually share it with their members. Now, there's a fee for that. Every one of the states had between three hundred and five hundred dollar fee, um, for posting that on their website. Um, so we utilize a lot of the ones we can within the state or with educational systems. Um, for example, uh, superintendent, uh, highway superintendent, uh, position through the state of South Dakota. We post positions there. Uh, we post information for equalization or for, um, planning and zoning. We posted with the planning, the National Planning Association. Um, again, each of those organizations requires a fee. Um, and we do that with the budget we have for advertising. Um, the advertising budget also supports the things that we do here locally. Um, we've been to five job fairs this year. That's new for us. We've not done job fairs in the past. Um, dispatch does it, uh, law enforcement does it, but we've not been involved because up until this year, we've not really seen the challenges in hiring. Um, that we are now. Uh, I wanna give you some information on applications versus, um, people who have viewed our jobs here in a moment as well, but, um.
So what kind of fee are you talking about?
Hmm.
That's required. What what kind of range and fees are you talking about?
Usually between three hundred and five hundred dollars per each posting. Um, yeah, and those are reasonable. Uh, when I checked out, um. Monster, who I wouldn't recommend for any recruiting, not that it's a terrible website, but it's not where most people go. Right now, uh, Indeed is one of those that we can advertise separately. They pick up our ads though, through NeoGov. Um, the state of South Dakota picks up our ads. There's other national sites as well. There's veterans websites as well as other public websites. That pick up our postings for free. But if we wanna target a specific audience, and we did this last year or two years ago with the journal here in town. You'll notice that I point geographically, whatever the group is I'm visiting, uh, with the journal, and we did some electronic, and they did targeted advertising for us as well. Now, that was fairly expensive. That was about twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, what we spent so far, and I think, I well, I hope you've seen some of the ads, uh, if you watch the CBS local affiliates, you've seen our ads. Um, for employment. We've spent thirty-two hundred dollars on advertising for the videos and for the advertising, um, so far this year, just through April. Um, so those efforts are being made. Uh, we're out there in the public, we're doing what we can, uh, to get attention. Uh, I did notice that when we advertised, the city had an ad that started almost the same exact time. So they sometimes run back to back, um, on pillow. It is what it is, but, um. We have the opportunity to do that. In many cases, it's it's gotta be targeted for it to be provided benefit. Uh, and some of that can be a little bit challenging with the types of positions that we have. I don't know, did that answer the question?
Yeah.
To some extent, anyway.
Yeah.
Um. So we continue to be active, and again, I mentioned that in my, in my summary with the recruiting efforts, uh, we're doing advertising. We're doing advertising. Actually, we have to thank Mr. Carley too in the dispatch center. He did a partnership with Marsh. With the last two digits. Anyway, Marsh Advertising here in Rapid City did a package of videos for him as well. I hope that, I think I maybe sent some of those because he had put them together and then I forwarded them out. They're testimonials from current employees about the things they like about working for Pennington County.
I saw those. I don't remember if that, how I got it.
Yeah, I think I think I had forwarded them because I wanted to make sure you had seen what he had done. The idea was for us to try to implement something similar to that for the other departments in the county. Now, I got a quote from them as well as Highway did probably back in, gosh, January or February. We met with representatives from that firm. The that package, I think, that they presented Joe as an option was almost eight thousand dollars. I think it was seventy-five hundred dollars to do three testimonials and do some additional advertising for the Highway Department. That hasn't been finalized yet. I got a quote also for just testimonial types of ads. Good, thank you, Joe. For the other departments here. Now, those are running about twelve hundred dollars a department. And it's for a thirty-second ad, but they will script it, they'll come and video it, they'll do all those things, and then give it to us for publishing. So it's it's a pretty cool program, but again, there's some additional expenses involved with that process. Not a bad plan, though. Honestly, traditional paper-based advertising or on the local website through the Journal. Over the course of the last three years, I haven't had a single person that's applied that said they saw it in the Journal. Now, again, it doesn't mean that that's a bad venue. It's a great paper, a great resource. People generally aren't looking to newspapers now for employment information.
Yeah, and I don't know how valuable that is, but repetition is one of the things.
You bet.
So maybe it provides repetition with the with the newspaper and then seeing it someplace else that triggers it, but yeah.
Yeah, so it's we've just changed the the way we're advertising to make sure that we're trying to get to the people that are out there looking for jobs. It's rare to see people with a newspaper or even to do that. But it's it's not impossible. We change up our venues to make sure that we've got a little bit of variety.
For those of us that can't focus on more than one thing at a time, Joe may have something to add.
I just wanted to talk about the videos, so they were out actually this last week, Wednesday, and did two testimonial videos for us, and they're putting that together, and they've actually done, they took our Facebook and have been promoting it in its paid sponsorship. Everybody that has Facebook to say, can see the ones that say sponsored or whatever. So as part of the package, they put together a social calendar that they put out post once a week or once every other week and tried to promote our Facebook and trying to grow awareness for County Highway. We haven't seen the promotional video yet. Kevin's that they did for for nine-one-one were excellent. And it was, I mean, we've talked about a radio ad. I'm sure everybody heard Rapid City's employment ad on the radio. I know I did. It seemed like every morning coming to work, I'm like, gosh, we should do that. So that's another avenue that we're looking at doing. I mean, everybody seems to be listening to the radio at some point during the day. So we'll see how, what the the videos bring in, and then I think we're going to go down the road of advertising on the radio as well, so.
What was their package price for that?
It was like sixty-five hundred bucks, I think, because Kevin had an advantage. He had a lot of his stuff put together already. He's done a lot of marketing already and had a lot of their videos, a lot of their own testimonials. So the price was a lot less for for Kevin, whereas we're not quite as creative over at County Highway. But so it was a little bit more, they had to create the content and all that stuff for us. So it was like sixty-five or seven thousand bucks or something like that, so hopefully it'll be money well spent, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Joe, is something that you can show at one of our commission meetings?
As soon as I get it put together, yeah, we'd love to show one of those video, show the employee spotlight video. Yep, hopefully, when is the next one? Next Tuesday? I doubt it'll be ready by then, but maybe July, or the end of July.
I know I share all the ones I get.
Yeah, they're great.
So how do you track it, John?
Pardon me?
How do you track these?
Oh, so in their application process, when people actually go online and fill out an application, it asks what they saw or where they heard about the positions, and there's a number, there's a dozen or more options that they can select, including all the local networks and the papers and things like that. So, yeah, we track the data in there to make sure that there's a good return. The next piece that I have is travel and conferences. So I attended this compensation conference back in, oh, gosh, early May, mid-May. The compensation folks from all around the world were there. World at Work is the preeminent leader, if you will, in in compensation and benefits, and they're the ones that sponsored this. The takeaways from that is that they asked a question, and this, again, is probably just common knowledge, but how many of you are struggling to recruit? There were fifteen hundred people plus in the room. There wasn't a hand that didn't go up. They all asked, or the question then came back to the audience, what are you doing to help with that? Some of them were offering bonuses. We're doing sign-ons with some of our departments. Some of them are offering the flexible schedules that we've been talking about, compressed or whatever work week. Again, more focused on those types of things. But the thing that seemed to be more common, that was more forward-thinking, goes back to helping the employees find a balance. So it's about wellness. What are we doing to help them find a balance in their lives? So if they're a parent, they're getting pulled to how many different activities for their children, medical appointments, what have you. If they're not a parent, they still have a lot of hobbies and clubs and things that they belong to, but it's trying to help them find a balance. Some of the larger companies that were there have done things like put in, I don't understand the whole shopping online and delivery to your house with meals, but they're doing those kind of delivery things. They're doing onsite banking, they're doing onsite laundry or day or dry cleaning. They're doing whatever they can, grocery deliveries, to help those people find a way to not be so scattered and have to scramble once they get out of work.
So what about daycare?
Daycare came up. There weren't a lot that were doing it. There were some vendors there that have opportunities. The daycare pieces are more challenging because as an industry, it's it's short everywhere. There's no one that found a good solution that was able to to speak to that. It is a big interest from employees, not just for children, but for elder cares where as well. Because there's so many people that are providing care for parents or grandparents as well as for their their kids, so.
Yeah, and among the why, why a fast board? And just trying to find the people, they're having problems finding people to do the work too. I mean certifications and so forth for daycare. So it, these problems are trickling down to every area. But you know, one thing you could think about, John, and I think we've kind of discussed this, we're on community health board, you know, when they opened up a shop right across the street in One Heart that couldn't be accessed through for employees to pick up meds, appointments or something along those lines, that's a good possibility too. I mean, just walk across the street, get a cup of coffee, walk next door, get your medications.
Yeah, and our employees have a big interest in that. I think we talked about that a few months ago. We did a survey to see what the employees' interests were. That's a definite focus. Again, the challenges are that there's not a lot of options. There's not a lot of employees wanting to go into that kind of work. It's, I don't have kids. I always had dogs. But I imagine that if you have a few kids around, it's probably manageable, but if you've got forty or fifty around, it might cause a little stress. Just my personal observation, I don't know. But there is a big interest from our employee base as well to have some kind of a daycare or care option. Most of the folks have wanted it onsite. That's a challenge of itself. Even with the the space needs analysis, there wasn't any space that was available within the rearrangement or the additions to make that possible. It would still likely have to be leased space. And I don't know that that's going to solve for the employees that were hoping to come to this campus, drop their kids, go to the office, work, pick the kids up. It doesn't help them if they're still having to drive to other remote locations.
So, John, I mean, will you just look at the numbers? You know, so let's say that we had something available for employees, and you have three hundred kids in daycare. The ratio for the amount of help you need for that is probably almost one out of one for three or something.
Yeah, it varies depending on the age groups. The older they are, the less people you have to have to supervise. But for infants, for example, I think it's one adult for two infants. It's pretty intense, the the number of employees you'd have to have. The other piece, once they get to a certain age, and I believe it was five or six, it's not only daycare, but you have to provide educational opportunities as well. There has to be some development. There has to be. So generally, you'll see teachers in those facilities, not just.
Education, food?
Yes. So the food, maybe we could do that through the the jail kitchen. I'm just throwing it out there. The sheriff wouldn't be happy, I'm sure. But there's options, I think, for food that are probably easier to solve than most of the others that go into that whole program. So it's still something that we we need to consider.
Big challenge.
It is. Yep, that it is. Our goals this year are to do the many of the same things that we've been doing. How do we support recruiting? How do we support the employees? How do we make sure they have educational opportunities and things that help them feel a connection to Pennington County? Travis, I think you said it very adeptly here a few meetings ago. Culture makes a difference. And they have to feel they're doing something that matters, and they have to feel like they're part of something and that their opinions are being listened to and respected. With that, any questions about the budget fees and then?
Mr. Chair.
The others.
Commissioner Roskin.
So services and fees, you've got one hundred and sixty-eight thousand three twenty-seven?
I will take your word for that, sir.
How much? What are you looking at, revenue or are you looking?
Oh, no, no, services and fees.
Nope, that's a.
Thank you.
That would be four twenty-two. My question is, is that where that NeoGov is coming out of?
That's.
How much of that is NeoGov?
That that's the purchase of the other three modules, and so I'll bring these up. This explains the contract as well as information on the three modules that we're requesting to add. Yeah, there it is. That's why I didn't put it in the packet.
Is this staggered over three years though? Is it staggered over three years?
The one hundred and eighty, there's like a huge implementation cost for the first year just to get the HRIS up and running. You'll see just on the flip side of that, yeah. So you'll see down here first round, they have an implementation fee the first year, and the other years are just software support. But it's a big number the first year just to get that built. They bring people onsite. They did that when we installed the the training software as well.
And that's a, that's a contract, that a three-year contract?
You have a choice. If you go with a shorter-term contract, you still have the the implementation cost that goes with it. So that doesn't lessen, but what happens to the subsequent years is that those fees end up being significantly higher than what they are if you do a three-year contract. Again, the longer the contract, the better they are. They were willing, they weren't initially, and I said we wouldn't even consider it if they didn't give us an option of freezing annual increases at three percent or less. So they said if we did the three-year, they would consider that. So we don't have to have anything back to them until the, I think they said in November, there was.
It's one hundred and eighty-three, and then how much are the fees every year?
They're broken out. If you look on there, they'll see the the fees are there for year one, year two, year three. The initial setup, and you'll notice on that that second page there, Commissioner, it shows the core setup is fifty thousand four hundred. That's the one that's not repetitive. That fifty-seven thousand dollar total is included in the one eighty-three. That's the amount.
Off this page or?
On the second one there, yeah. This is the fees to set it up. So it's fifty-seven five, and that's. So then you have these annual costs for the software renewal here. So that's for software updates.
Both those fees would be every year, year two, oh, no, year two, year two, okay.
So are there other departments that use NeoGov?
They all use it for the recruiting and staff pieces right now. So they review their applicants. They actually can mark the different data. They can input interview scores. Dispatch is the one that uses it the most completely. They have like four or five different steps of consideration for each of their candidates. They do pre-screening, they do skills assessment, they do personality. There's a number of different components, and they have a different piece of that built into their their application. Yeah, so each department does. Some departments don't use the Insight as much. Insight is more for us in creating the postings and following up to make sure the data is updated. Most of them use OHC, which is a version that they can go in and actually put in the date of the offer, the amount of the offer, the date the person's scheduled to start. And that's not a package, it's included in this as far as what we currently have. We don't use that in HR. We use the Insight, and then we use OHC to help follow up with questions that the departments might have.
So, John, is this, is this supported strictly by the Amber? Do they work with our IT department?
This is completely cloud-based, so it doesn't require any server space. It doesn't require anything here. They provide all the follow-up and the service. There's some components to this that I think would help us moving forward if it was approved. But with regard to employees, the the biggest thing that I, is just the continuity from one package to the next. We could enter all of the employee data in one screen. They'd actually do a lot of that for us before they even get here. We'd be able to upload all of that, and I said there was a communication process for them to transition all that information over to Springbrook for payroll.
So, so this could benefit Auditor's Office eventually too.
I don't think you'll see anything different from them, because the data for employees, we input in HR. When I visited with Sandy and Pepper, they said there's thirteen or fourteen different screens that they have to go through.
Okay, so, so, so employee information versus payroll information are still two separate?
There, there, there would be. Now, this has a payroll capability. That's not what we're looking at. Because Cindy uses the Springbrook system for payroll. Yeah, everything else about this would be a single location for employee data, which is very helpful. From a reporting perspective, from a development perspective, all those different pieces are very handy for an HR team to actually be able to to use.
I was just wondering if Tyler had anything. I know you had information on it, and I know we're thinking about moving that direction with the software, which means the payroll would be, so do they have anything?
No, currently. They have their old system, and it's not something that does the things I need. Yeah, and it would be another separate system that doesn't make sense with what we currently use. So it doesn't help me that way. I did. I thought Tyler, I was hoping Tyler would be the answer, but it doesn't seem to be there. It doesn't look like it's a priority. Oh, my.
So is there something eventually to replace Springbrook or is that?
I.
Springbrook there for.
I can't speak to that.
That that would be the financial software that we're looking at that also ties into the tax software with DOE and Janet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would end up replacing all three systems. And so that would be our payroll and financial. All would be on Tyler as well as our portioning, levy setting, Shannon's.
Oh, okay.
And all that would, rather than us having to have Lori maintain a program and do the fixes as laws change and that sort of thing related to levies, Tyler would be on top of that. And the state is in the process of changing the way we submit things anyway, and Tyler is working very closely with them to make sure that the format that we can upload to the state matches, so we don't have to manually enter anything. And that gives, like I said, Lori out of the software business as far as apportioning tax receipts.
So I have no idea how much dollars we're talking about there, but is this something that, I mean, if we're going to end up doing some bonding here at a later date, is this something, we want to have all that information collected?
We have been putting money away in in reserves for that. Janet has, I have. And last year, I'd asked you to put away some of the one-time funds for that for. Janet has, I have, um, and last year I'd asked you to put away some of the one-time funds for that for us. But we do not have an estimate for a cost yet.
Okay.
They're rewriting a large portion of it to a new version.
Okay.
Don't have any estimates yet.
Yeah.
There are other firms that do information system types of systems. They wouldn't be compatible with, uh, the systems we currently have. So it's, what's simple about this and what's convenient or really a benefit is that it's the same platform. It's the same dashboards that the, the, uh, the department heads currently see for all of their employee data. All of the hiring information would be on the same visibility. All of their training information is on the same screen. All their performance management information would be available all through a single system. So it's a way to bring it all together.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
John, I see there's year one implement, uh, implementation, then year two support, year three support, what happens in year four?
It would be a new contract. No, great question. So the longest they would go right now would be a three-year contract. We have on our performance management, we were, they gave us a five-year contract. But for these modules, building it into our current system, they would only go through three. They initially said one year, and I said, what would the benefits be in extending that? There are discounts for going longer term, but this was the longest.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LaCroix.
I'm going to poke the bear. A while back, I, you know, at lunchtime, I, Joe Miller and all of us were talking about, uh, the sick leave and, and that stuff, and I've talked to Cindy about this last year when I heard about it, because what Joe had brought up was the same thing as what community health does, instead of cashing in, you know, right now, probably employees save their, and we just had one show up to, or in the budget showed up. A payout of sixty thousand. What community health does is, is they have a good, good health bonus at the end of the year, so they don't, they get their, their personal time and sick time acquired, but at the end of the year, they could.
Right.
Cash it out. You remember that discussion, Cindy? Yeah, see.
She's excited about that.
Yeah, I poked the bear. So, that's what I mean, because I was trying to explain the reaction I got to Joe from you, but it had to do with a lot of the, I think the cost.
Yeah.
It was like cost inhibitive. So I don't know if you could explain that a little bit, so Joe who's watching in the chambers could hear it.
As far as the added cost?
Yeah, because, well, you know more about where we're at with that. The initial, if I remember right, you, you talked about the initial cost was per year would be, see?
I don't remember, um, talking about an, an actual cost, but obviously if people aren't utilizing their vacation, I mean, when we budget, we budget for, you know, two thousand.
Yep.
Eighty hours. So if you're also going to pay out another forty hours on top of that, or another eighty hours on top of that, you're going to drive your budget up. Yes, you will be reducing your overall, um, leave liability. But the leave liability doesn't get paid out every year. So it's, it's, it's a number that's carried on our financials and I can get that number for you because it is pretty significant of what we have for, um, the leave liability on the sick leave payout.
So, so explain to me, if we're carrying that and we know it's there, we know it's going to happen. What happens now is the department heads pretty much know when somebody's going to retire, so they can potentially put that in their budget, so it's not such a big hit. Correct. And if I remember our discussions, trying to do this, the startup, to re, to do, continue the payouts that we had and to do this every month, that's where it become unfeasible to do. I would take some funds.
It, it would.
To get going.
It would. And if, like I said, if you.
With our funds limited, it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, that number currently is, is potentially an expense for the county. But if you start paying that out every year, then it's a guaranteed expense every year.
Yes, I see where some of the private industry has gone to that, that they're offering that as their, as their added benefit, which is a very costly benefit.
It is, yeah.
Because most, most governments that I know, they have a max on all of those.
If I remember right, ours was adjusted to where, you know, this is the max you can get, the maximum payouts, fifty percent, so you're actually saving fifty, whereas if you went to this yearly payout, you're probably, you'd have to either do the same. Yeah. I just wanted, as part of our discussion, so I wanted to know.
About cash flow, Joe. Yep, yep. And I know we've kind of had that conversation as well.
We've been meeting recently to talk about options, so the department had elected official meetings that we've had for the past, well, since last fall. We've talked about different options for helping employees. One of the, the solutions that, and I'm, when I was at the conference here back in May, was a vendor there called PTO Exchange. What they do is work with employers across the country to help find a way where employees can access some of those accrued hours that they may not ever use. So it's a type of payout, but it's completely controlled, well, as would any system that we would, if we wanted to implement, it's completely at our discretion. How it would be structured, what, who would apply, how many hours they could, um, you know, cash in, if you will, or whatever. We control all of the pieces of it. This vendor, however, works with the employers and with the employees in very much the same manner, but they said that what they're doing is helping employees access their accrued time that they're not going to use or haven't used, or maybe they're up against that earnings cap. They converted over into things that they do need. They, they said the most common one that they're seeing with the groups that they're supporting is for, uh, payments towards education debt. So college loans, uh, they're finding a way to get that money. Their commission, if you will, is seven percent, uh, is what he explained to me. I haven't contacted them since I got back, because we're talking about their possibilities here. But it's a way to control how much is being paid out, it's a way to help the employees. I'm thinking you'd see it used in a number of ways. One, hey, I want a trip to wherever, um, I'm going to go to Canada in January, no, there, whatever. So I'm being a little bit facetious, but, uh, they said the most common thing that they see was for education repayments. But they said also, and what I would anticipate, and it's kind of like, uh, not so much here, but other employers have kind of like a, a holiday fund where people can put so much money away each paycheck and then get it out in November. We don't do that, but I would see that program being something that could be used by employees to have money for Christmas gifts, for example, or would have a, if they got some kind of a medical need and they've got a, a big bill to pay. The employers in, in any situation, whether we use the vendor or try to do something internally ourselves, are completely in control of the rules. Who, who qualifies? How much could they cash in? When could they cash it in? What's the balance they have to retain in there? It's much like we have rules around our, uh, sick leave donation for people that have catastrophic illnesses. You set the same parameters. So there's a lot of options, but that's what we, we talked about yesterday at our meeting, um, was that, and then trying to find other solutions that help our employees. But it would bring down the balances, our leave liability would be less. But as you work into that program, you have additional expenses that you've not had in prior years. So budgeting for the first year or two is kind of an ugly situation, because now your wage dollars or your expenses related to wages are higher. Now, does it balance out? Yeah, once you're into that type of a system, you don't longer have that big incline that you see on your, your spend. But it's something that, that could be considered right now for our employees. Yeah, well, no, there's, from the HR side, this would be a really cool program for our employees. From the budgeting side, it's difficult. As I mentioned, and this came up earlier, so I, on the nurse sheet, I'm going to give you. I just sent these out earlier today to the department heads. So you'll see the cover letter, and then on the back are actually a list of questions. We invited or encouraged the departments to actually go back to their employees and visit them and see what they might be able to consider as far as options within their offices. Excluded on there are the sheriff, dispatch, highway, and natural resources. Highway and natural resources already have a four-ten schedule. So the other ideas on here, other than that, are, are going to be coming from the people in this building was the goal. I copied the other four, um, even though we didn't invite participation. I wanted them to be aware of what we are asking the, the departments in this building. But it's what can we do to help our associates find a balance? If it's not money, uh, and if it's not a four-ten, although I would still encourage that, what other things are the departments able to do from an operational perspective to still provide services and still be able to find a way to help their employees, like Lori's doing? Barry does the same thing with his HHS folks. They work ten-hour shifts with the exception of a few, um, because they're still on Monday through Friday. There's no interest from Barry, nor were we intending to include Barry in HHS events. We were just talking about this main administration building. But we sent this list out earlier today, um, after we met yesterday. What can we do to get more information that would help us, you know, kind of understand what the needs are within the offices or what the, the options are within each office? Because we can think we know, uh, but we won't know until they actually provide that, that feedback. We ask to have that back, I think, by midweek next week, so, uh, we'll have some additional information to, to share with the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're reaching out to the employees, but as some folks have said, are we reaching out to the general public? Because that's who we really serve, so somehow.
Yes.
I would encourage, I don't know how we're going to do that, do it on the, our website or a news release, but I, I think we need to really, uh, see what the general public, uh, at least get them involved in the process, because I don't want to implement this and then all of a sudden find out that we have to backtrack.
No, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner. So, uh, as was mentioned earlier, I think Annette probably spoke to that briefly. They started doing surveys of their customers last week, so Thursday and Friday we got numbers. Uh, and they're continuing for the next ten days, I think, was the discussion. Built, or not buildings, uh, planning and zoning has also started, uh, surveying their customers. Here's some of the preliminary numbers, just Thursday and Friday last week. So again, in the treasurer's office, and I'm going to get this wrong, I'm sure. There were three hundred and twenty-nine of the public that were surveyed, said, yep, they'd support it. There was only thirty-nine that said they wouldn't. So again, three hundred and twenty-plus said, yep, this is good, and a, a small percentage of that, thirty-nine, said no. In planning and zoning, they only had six responses, four said yes and two said no. So again, not a big enough, uh, population from a survey perspective to give a lot of credibility. But so far, uh, on the surface, and again, the treasurer is our busiest office in this building, um, their customers are saying they would support it. So that's what we have so far.
Did you ever get ahold of the Rapid City?
Yes, I did reach out to them, they haven't considered it. Uh, I reached out to Minnehaha Company, they have considered it, but because of the mix of offices that work in their building, they weren't quite sure how to implement them. So they're interested in seeing how it goes here. The Wall School District does this, they have a four-day week. The City of Sturgis, if I remember, uh, has a four-day week. There's a number of others in the area that are doing this. And there's different businesses in town that have this as well, like, for example, my dentist isn't there on Fridays. But, uh, every office and every business has a different reason for doing what they're doing. But this has become more commonplace than we might imagine, and I think it's done, again, for two reasons. One, to help the employees find a balance, how do they keep up with all the demands of, of life? Uh, and the second thing is for employers to find a way to get employees to want to work there. And that's my big go-after, again, those two things, they're primary. If you can help them find a balance and give them a reason to work for you rather than somewhere else, that's what we need to figure out, so, my, my perspective, so.
I think the information will all be good coming back to us, but.
Right, so we should have that, uh, by the meeting on the nineteenth, we should have that. I wanted to give you some numbers, so in NeoGov, in our recruiting software, uh, I pulled this earlier today, and I didn't know that I'd need it, but, we currently have nine positions posted, current nine openings. An assortment, administrative assistant in the commission office, uh, uh, highway maintenance worker. I don't know if Joe's still here, no, I'm pointing to Joe and he's gone. Custodian, building tech, public defender, deputy states attorney, diversion case worker, staff assistance and tax and title assistance. Nine positions. Of those nine positions, we've had seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine people view them. The postings. Again, nine positions, seventeen thousand, one eighty-nine people have viewed them. Only seventy-two people have applied. So over seventeen thousand have looked at those postings, but we've only convinced seventy-two to apply. It's pretty discouraging. The thing is, we're getting people to look, we just have to find a way to make it, um, the place to look.
How would we find out, you know, if they're looking, they have at least some interest?
Right.
Maybe it's not for themselves, maybe it's for somebody else. How do we find out, you know, why they basically walked away and?
We, we don't know who those seventeen thousand are, that's the challenge. Yeah.
John, if, Gary, if you don't mind me asking a question, is that, are we sure it's only one person? The reason why I ask this question, because sometimes I open up tabs.
Sure.
And then they, they refresh. Does that count them or not? Because I know we get, see that on some of the things we do, we see every time refreshing, it gives a new count, and it's because it's refreshing. Do we know that it's actual seventeen thousand or?
I can't swear to that, but we've been told by the software provider that these are unique individuals looking.
Okay.
It's, it's scary. So here's, again, this is the latest, the latest data that I got. This is through May. Last year we were at three point two percent unemployment and there were roughly twelve hundred people. Cut that by a third, because this year, um, through May, it's two point one percent unemployment here, and there's eight hundred people, um, that are available. Now, I would tell you, from an economics perspective and from an HR perspective, you get below three or three and a half percent unemployment, you are fully employed. The ones that are not working right now probably aren't employable in many cases. So we've got to find a way to convince people that are working elsewhere to come work for the county.
I got, after some of the discussions that's happened so far today, it just brings memory of, I, I read the article in the NACO newsletter that just came out. Plus, at the conference, they talked about this. But what are the, some of the other counties are doing is getting creative with the job descriptions. You know, sometimes our requirements for the educational piece and some of these other ones are pretty high, whereas a lot of the counties now are, are finding ways to, to level people up, just as, as Eric had said here, maybe trying to get people in to work up to where they can be, and maybe some of our job descriptions, we're, you know, we just went through an interview process with, with a, a job at the city. Jesus, we had so much stuff on there, you know, you got to kind of make it to where that person can work up to where they need to be.
Right, no, thank you for that, Commissioner, because we've been doing some of that already with the departments. So we've changed the way the descriptions are worded online, including that, if you don't really acquire a bachelor's degree, why are you asking for it? And it's an entry-level job for us, but you want them to have three years of experience. It's entry-level, how are they going to have three years' experience? It's not possible, uh, or not realistic. There are things we've added, if you look at some of our job descriptions or our postings, especially, uh, well, highway is the one that's probably most. Every one of the highway positions now, right in the header, we talk about the benefits of working for the highway department. A four-day schedule, the benefits that are offered, the retirement system, all those lead before we actually get into the description of the position. So we started doing that, we did that for buildings and grounds, we're doing it for highway. We're trying to make it different, so you can capture their attention and make them want to read the rest versus boring them with, here's the job title again, it was just here, but we're going to say it again. So we're, we're trying to make it more interesting in the application process and making the requirements more realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So how many employees does the city have?
How many does the city have? I couldn't say.
You know, Lord, I can't remember.
Oh, I think they've got to be right around, well, we're at eight hundred.
Yep.
I think they, they've got to be probably right around there, between the water department, waste and police.
So how many openings do we have in Pennington County?
Nine.
You have ninety. Isn't it ninety people?
They have pages and pages of openings, I know.
Yeah, about ninety, I heard.
Well, I know a lot of. Over a thousand, I think.
Yeah, a lot of them right now are for their summer help, I know.
Yes.
Not being able to fill, so I don't know how many of that would.
But I think the bottom line is, we're finding people aren't wanting to work in government. And it's getting more and more of that. It's been like that, and I've heard like, you know, things like that for the last couple of years. I don't know why that is, I don't, I don't have an explanation, I just, like, people just don't want to work in government like they used to.
I think Joe spoke to that a little bit too, at the meeting last Tuesday, I think it was. It's not the attraction, it used to be, hey, you can get a government job, great. Get in there, work twenty years, retire.
Get the benefits.
Right, people don't think that way anymore, they're looking at bottom line. And when you have a retirement system, and granted, South Dakota retirement is one that's, it's well-known throughout the country as being one of the strongest and the best. But when you tell employees that they have to contribute six percent of their pay, whereas if they work for somewhere else, it's usually voluntary for a 401K, they don't see the fact that the county's contributing six percent along with that.
Yeah.
They don't see that as a benefit right now.
Yeah.
I just need to pay my rent or my utilities. So it's difficult to overcome that, and I don't have a solution for that, I don't know what it is.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
So we were starting, Steve Aljore, and he mentioned, they're taking their younger employees and having them get in groups and putting together, what, what do we, what do we need to be looking at for some kind of a benefit? So one of them was pet insurance, health club memberships. But they're reaching out to the younger group to see, and I don't, I don't know, and then there was that, what was the day they were talking about, the mental health day?
Sure.
So I don't know.
We've talked about.
Maybe we got to be thinking out of the box here.
At the department head meeting, we actually talked about allowing employees to use one of their recruit sick days, so it's not even additional hours, but to use it once a quarter, just as a mental health day. I need a break. One of the employees in the survey that they turned in here, because we did the survey again a few months ago, said, it's my no day. And with the, it was equalization, I think, was the department that turned this one in, and they asked what that person meant. She says, I get out of bed, nope, went back to bed, I'm not going to work today. So they're looking just for a break, they're looking for a way. And it's not new hours, but again, it's a change in mindset for us. But there's things that we can do with what we currently offer, if we just change the way that they can be leveraged. But no, a couple cautions. I want to hear from the employees, and we did survey the folks through their departments as well as just through the survey. It's dangerous to focus on a group of youth. Athletes start to border on being illegal, because you should be surveying all the employees. At the point you want to hire somebody because they're younger, that's a problem, it's illegal. You can't do those types of things, but it's a way to have focus groups and bring groups of people. Maybe they're newly hired employees, that's legal. But to focus on people that are a younger demographic, that kind of makes it a little iffy, so.
It'd be interesting on those hits, like Gary said, to see, and just to see if they would answer, why wouldn't you take this job, or, you know, some questions, you know, just, because that's a lot of hits with a lot of information, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I figured you had.
I was just going to speak to the mental health day, because I think that goes to the culture in the office.
Yeah.
If somebody in my staff was having a bad day and needed the day off, I would absolutely give them a mental health day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Julie started that years ago. If you're having a bad day and you wake up and you're just, you know, you're having a bad day, it's a mental health day, it's a no day.
Yeah.
Call and let me know. Don't lie to me and tell me you're sick.
Yeah.
Call and let me know, you can have a mental health day, and it comes out of your sick leave.
Yeah.
It already happens in my office.
Right?
And the office is probably better off for it too.
Yes. Yes.
Boy, I think the process is standardized in that, because there's some department heads.
How do you do that?
Absolutely, we'll not do that. Nope, here's the rules, this is when you can use them.
If we're going through the change, we have a lot of those.
Can you get extra?
There's a lot of things we can consider.
If we actually have a real excuse for mental health issues, do, do you get extra days?
That's the best way to put it, is.
Funny, but it's true.
Employees are so trained to, they need a day off, say it's sick, because that's the requirement. So being express, explicitly expressed that, hey, I'm having some things at home happening, I need a day off, is easy for them, or more.
Better for the office.
They're not having to lie or anything, they can be honest and have it out.
So those are the things, and the, the list of questions I gave you on the front page, it shows, there's a subcommittee, if you will, from the department head and elected official group that's working on trying to find options, solutions. So here's two of them, and myself, but we have Barry, Janet, Lori as well. But we're all trying to help find a way to bring the ideas back from the employees and from the departments to present options to the board. It's just a different mindset, it's a way of helping the employees feel good about being here and want to be here, so.
John.
I'm off myself, Fox.
Mr. Chair, you know, has there been much discussion on, you know, like, equal, or planning talked about a three-quarter personnel, exactly how they do it, they come in late, leave quarter, you know, maybe there's people out there that, two days a week, I want to work two days, and another one's two or one. I mean, there's, there's a lot of these people, and you were right way back when, that have retired early. But now they've got their stuff done and would want something to do for
Right.
two days a week or three days.
That's, so some of the fast food places, thank you for the question, some of the fast food places are leveraging that. McDonald's, hey, you only want to work four hours in the morning, come work six to ten and do your thing the rest of the day. They're getting working parents to come in. They can come in over the noon hour, they can come in mid-afternoon before they pick up their kids. It's a different mindset again. We can do that here, it's not prevalent, we have a couple part-time folks on the non-law enforcement side. There was one half-time person in the treasurer's office, I think we have our three-quarter time person in planning. It's more common in law enforcement, because they've got a way to bring those folks in. And we have some of our interns that I believe don't work full-time, full-time hours, in the law enforcement or not, our legal offices, so. It's a great opportunity, I think that's an untapped group of potential workers.
Certain departments it worked for, and so it's not going to.
Yeah, and there's a lot, if there is a lot of complexity to the job, it's difficult to get that person here long enough to train fully, and then only have them work four hours. You make a, quite a commitment to getting them the knowledge they need. And then, again, you might not be able to leverage or get the return on that, so. No, thank you, that's a good question.
Other questions for John? So, a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
Healthcare trust board.
Yes.
Has there been an adjustment in cost to employees?
The three percent is what we recommended, we hadn't finalized that, I tried to get back in May to finalize that, and they wanted to wait until we got through hearings and saw what the recommendations were from Wellmark. Wellmark, over the course of the last four years, has recommended anywhere between eight and eleven percent increases annually. I think one year they recommended over twelve. We have held steady and not had any increases for four years, we actually had a decrease that fifth year prior to that. This year, we recommended three percent increase. Then we got the Delta Dental Statement saying they're increasing their rates five percent. That's not a maybe, that's the new rates for twenty-three, so. We have a meeting coming up on the twentieth of July, but we're going to have to finalize that. We have four new members coming in as well for that first meeting. But we wanted to get through the hearing, see how it's been.
Is dental selective, I mean, can you?
If they take our health, they have to take dental.
Oh, they do.
It's a combo, it's required. They can, however, if they don't take our health, can take just the dental alone. We, again, pay roughly seventy, seventy-five percent of the dental premium, when I say.
So the payout for claims has been, I mean, hasn't justified?
It's actually, we needed to raise rates three years ago. There should have been incremental rates over the course of that time period. Doing it now, even three percent, probably won't be sufficient. But if we plan on doing it this year, next year, the year after, we may be able to catch up enough, that will be okay. That's from my non-apparent math. I've done a lot of budgeting and things over the past several years.
Well, my opinion is, is that it needs to be looked at every year.
Yes.
And I think a small increment in order to keep the, keep it balanced is a lot better than waiting three, four, or five years and then needing to do that
Right.
ten or twelve percent adjustment, so.
They will be attending, they being Wellmark, will be coming to our July twentieth meeting, so they're supposed to be bringing some information, again, about what they're seeing across their book of business and what their recommendations will be.
And if you're trying to retain people, and then you're going to jack their prices up extremely, then that, that was kind of, you know, the opposite side of what we're trying to do.
Exactly.
But you still, like I said, that we should have been doing it every year. Could, would, should, we all foresight, no blame, in that sense, just, it's time to start doing an increase, I agree with Gary, every year. Not just to catch up, but just to stay there.
To be able to, yes, you don't have any of these crazy numbers. Again, three percent is a reasonable increase, is it sufficient? I don't believe so.
Well, all, all insurances too do that.
Yeah.
John, not just health, so every insurance you have, every year is increased a certain percentage, even if it's a little bit to keep up, so they're not going bang here, you know, this is, this is what's going to happen, is you're going up six percent, eight percent.
Most definitely.
Just food for thought.
I, I think we'll be in better shape, I think people understand the need for adjustments and.
So by, as an example, this year, my Medicare, my increase went up what I received from social security.
Sure.
But that was more than eaten up by my increase in my medical.
Wow. Wow.
So.
Wow, yeah, I, we're in kind of a weird time. What's strange about our claims so far, we've had some months or some weeks that have come in where it's been over two hundred thousand dollars. The one I got yesterday or today was ninety-nine thousand dollars. So you, you're still seeing this kind of seesaw or roller coaster. Last year, we saw sizable claims, pretty much continually. And I expected that this year with people getting back in to see their physicians and dentists and whatever. But it hasn't been consistent, so it's kind of odd. I think it'll still exceed what we projected, but I don't think that's going to be as terrible, although the fall months, November, December, where we start to see everybody use up whatever they have. We'll see how it shakes out, we, we keep an eye on it pretty close, so.
Okay. Cindy.
Oh, good.
And I don't always attend the healthcare trust board meetings, I let Casey do that, but I know the healthcare trust board meet, set a goal of a reserve. And so they're supposed to be reviewing that at a certain point in the year to try and determine whether we need to increase or not. The other thing that we don't know how much it's going to change our claims is we change the prescription benefits.
Yes.
So rather than being ten dollars for ninety days, it's thirty dollars for ninety days. We don't know what kind of impact that's going to have on our overall costs to the healthcare trust fund, yet.
Good point.
So.
Yeah.
Maybe with the three percent and that, maybe that's what we need to do this year.
It might be.
And see where that prescription change takes us. Because there was a change to the ninety days, there was a change in the tier, there was a change in the high-cost specialty drugs in the, the copay on that, so all of those things may make a difference.
Right.
That was the goal anyway. And we thought if we start with a use fee, basically, if you have more prescriptions, you're going to pay more towards your healthcare rather than jacking everybody's rates because you have more drugs than I do, or you take more drugs, prescriptions than I do.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Oh, gosh.
I take more variety, she takes more.
No.
I just thought that was a good point to make too, with the healthcare trust board.
They've, they've made adjustments to the plan to try to help offset some of that.
I remember that now, that, that was, yeah.
For, yeah, tier one, it was ten dollars, now it's thirty, tier two was fifteen, now it's forty-five. The specialty drugs, I don't know what it was, but it doubled, I think.
A max or something like that.
So I think, yeah, good, good point for the combination of the three percent and that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I talked about the child fairs and other things, so we've done five career fairs so far this year.
How many more people do we have today, Holly? You're just it? That was John. What's that?
Thank you, Commissioner, sorry for all the extra data, I didn't want to have it in packets.
That was a good explanation, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Before this process is all over with, we'll have a lot more questions.
Okay, thank you, I'll be here.
What?
No, go ahead, I'll grab my stuff here.
We're not ready for Holly.
We're not ready. Well, Travis, you were talking about the cash applied, and I have this on my computer. Finished it up today, but this shows the history of what was budgeted for cash applied versus what was actually used for cash applied.
That's where you got your.
And I thought that might be of interest.
That's why you came up with what you did, because of it?
Yeah.
Or no?
Kind of. So, if you look at, well, if you just look at twenty-twenty-one, when the budget was done, we calculated that we'd use the four-point, I mean, cash applied to support the budget. And we only used a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Go back to twenty-twenty, of course, that was kind of an odd year, we, everybody tried to save, and so that probably should just be set aside. In nineteen, we were looking at using eleven percent cash applied, and we actually didn't use any cash applied. We actually gained one point two.
Go through, and go, take twenty-twenty-one and go through that and explain it.
Okay, so, I have this, I have a worksheet that shows the budget, which, and then the revenues, and so at the top of that is cash applied. So if your revenue is less than your budget, that's how much from your piggy bank you're going to have to spend in order to meet your needs, your means of finance, basically. And so, over the course of twenty-one, rather than needing to use four point nine million from the piggy bank, we only used a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Because we had the additional revenue.
Because we had additional revenue and unspent budget.
Okay.
That all makes a difference in the, in the whole calculation.
So the cash applied is basically ma- making our payments until we get the money to re, put it back in?
No, cash applied is, is.
Savings account.
It's, you're taking money from your savings account to pay your bills. Or at least to meet the needs of the budget as it's laid out.
Isn't that what I said?
That's really what you're doing.
I think that's what you said.
Yeah.
That might be one.
Julie's the one that.
I thought you were trying to offset it with future revenue, and no, it's not, it's not.
Julie used to tell us that, Lloyd, what you just said.
I know I've got twenty thousand coming in, so I got to pay a twenty thousand dollar bill, but then that twenty thousand comes in and I'm expecting it.
She's saying, first three months.
Yeah, it comes, it's our reserves to pay our bills, because we haven't had our.
Yeah, you're talking cash flow, not cash applied.
A year through property taxes, you're talking cash flow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I just thought that might be of interest, since Travis had brought that up, I thought I'd bring that down.
Before you leave, before you leave, oh, one of the things that we've, we had talked about earlier, and it's coming along, and Ron's been working with them, and that's on the Silver City Fire Station.
Ouch, okay.
We, and we talked about using Pilt dollars potentially for that.
Ouch.
So the Pilt dollars are already figured into the?
They're in the general fund, they're already figured into the.
Into the general fund?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So do we know how many dollars we have coming in, or is that unknown yet?
For twenty-three, it's unknown, yet, but.
For twenty-two?
I think we just got that, and I can't remember what it was. But of course, that was figured into our budget, I don't, I don't know if it's over or under what was estimated, I'd have to look at that. But I can check that out and get back to you tomorrow on that.
Okay, yeah.
So is ca- sorry, just one thing, is cash applied, is that in the twenty percent that you keep us on? Is that in the twenty percent that you keep us on interest or what is it? Yeah. So the cash applies in that total of the twenty percent?
The reserves.
Reserves, sorry.
Yes, I have that calculated into my estimate on where we would be for unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Yes.
So that's in reserves. So if you took it down, it's in, so this year you're doing a little bit different because you have seven million for twenty twenty two. What'd you put in? Cash applied this year, Cam, did you say? What was the total?
For twenty three?
I apologize. I did not. I could probably. Cash applied. This year is seven million too?
Oh, no, I think I wrote the wrong, um, I think I got in a hurry and put the wrong number in here. Um, for twenty two. I don't, I don't have that, but.
You don't have twenty three.
Yeah, in twenty three is the seven point six one six. I missed that one.
Okay, and twenty two is different? You have twenty two, you have that same number?
Right, it would have been different. I don't, I don't have that number with me.
So would you keep it at the seven because you wanna keep it at ten point two six?
That's totally up to you guys. I mean, if if we're looking at the way the budget sits right now, even though we're using seven point six of cash applied, we'll still be sitting at nineteen point eight percent unassigned fund balance. So almost your twenty percent reserve.
That just, that's why you put it there. What else is is calculated in the basically the, the, uh, what'd you just say? I have a, I'm having a brain fart. I'm getting tired. For the twenty percent calculation, you take the cash applied.
For the twenty percent calculation, I took the unassigned fund balance at the end of twenty one.
Unassigned, okay.
Added in the revenue.
Okay.
Subtracted out the budget.
Okay.
Added back in an estimate of what I believe will be unspent in budget.
Okay.
And add back in an estimate of what I believe will be over collected in revenue.
Okay.
Then I subtract out anything that's budgeted for reason or for assigned fund balance because obviously we're only looking at unassigned. So I subtract that out to come up with the estimate on the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year.
Which would be the twenty percent or nineteen, whatever you had.
Yep.
You can do all that just even before all that is done, before twenty two? That's a lot to calculate. Holy cow.
I I use the same sort of assumptions for twenty two though.
Okay.
So that I can get to where I believe we're gonna be at the end of twenty two so that I can project into twenty three.
Okay.
I use the same basic formulas.
That's a lot of process.
It is, but.
I think you've told me before, I just never wrote it down and and calculated it into my brain how you came up with the bottom line.
One final question, Cindy. Going back to the fire departments.
Okay.
Okay, so we we just signed the contract with, uh, scenic. Uh, we also have one out there for Quinn. We have, did we sign one with Washtenaw already or is?
I think that scenic is the first one that you signed. I think that's the template for the rest.
We have the other two out there. So we still have that money in reserve for those?
Yes, when you guys made the motion for the one point eight million, I believe. I earmarked that as a signed fund balance because I knew you would be eventually allocating that money to those fire departments.
Okay, so did we give any one of those more than five hundred thousand? So.
I don't, I don't remember the numbers.
Each, each were five hundred thousand.
Have you set aside one point eight?
I thought there was some, some of their sort of radio or something. That's what it was. That's what it was. There was nothing allocated for. Or we wait and see if the federal government comes through with some grants for volunteers, volunteer fire departments.
Well, I think they're closing in on the land, are they not, Ron?
Yeah, they're working with the Forest Service on getting a special use permit for about three acres and they've already kinda got that earmarked. And I've got it in my inbox. I can show you all the paperwork up to date that that the Silver City Fire Department has provided to us showing that they're getting really close to being able to sit there and maybe start construction.
Well, if we're gonna fund that this year, then I would need to take that out of our unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
Well, I've never heard, maybe I've been gone because I've been on vacation and stuff. Does Silver City bring that to the Fire Service Board or does it just come here?
It doesn't come here, right?
I don't know that they've come here yet.
I'm talking, I'm saying, does it supposed to come through the Fire Service Board then come here or you just bring it here?
I, I don't know.
Cause I don't think they know the Fire Service Board. I didn't know anything about that.
And we didn't talk about it last meeting.
No, I think it it needs to be ran through the Fire Service Board as well.
I would have thought so too.
That way they have to know that Quinn and and Wall are gonna be affected. And if Quinn and Wall aren't ready, uh, maybe then you and they're do the report and say, well, it's gonna be another year or something, then it's a no brainer to move Silver City forward. That's what I'm, I'm not trying to stop you, Ron. I'm trying to kinda see if we can move it forward.
Okay, just so you're aware that that's.
Gary.
Do we have any estimate? I mean.
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand is kinda what we're looking at.
We forefire departments.
Then we will definitely be under nineteen percent.
And I think all of them at that time thought that five hundred was gonna be sufficient to take care of the needs. And I think they're finding out not the case.
Oh, I suppose, yeah, certainly, certainly.
Got a lot of pancake feeds.
I was just gonna ask a question. Do we, is the Fire Force Department donating the land or are they having to purchase it? Do you know?
I think they're talking about a long term, a lease.
Oh, one of those long term, one dollar leases?
That's a thirty year special use permit and because it's a fire department, public service, there's no annual, no, no annual rent or no annual charge.
Gotcha.
Somewhere to Rochford Fire Department.
Thanks.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Holly, we've been waiting for you all day.
Thank you for your patience, commissioners. I am ready now.
Did you mean the budget or?
It's supposed to be the quickest one, right?
Yeah, I'll stand for any questions.
I don't have any.
It's their budget. They should know it. That's exactly it.
So are we one of those first tabs here?
You are. Should be after. Before courts.
Yeah.
She has them under A, B, C, D, E. Just before courts.
Oh, it's hidden. Got it.
Yes, I recycle, so thank you for bearing with me when they're not pretty and in order.
We don't have any significant, let's service some fees, Holly.
Start who?
Service and fees. All right, so service and fees for the commission office budget includes chamber dues that we pay. Um, it includes our Nenco and South Dakota Association county dues. Uh, it includes our membership to the Black Hills Council of Local Governments. Our, we pay for the Department of Legislative Audit each year. Um, our codified law updates, my copier lease payment, my postage machine lease payment and conference registrations are what is included in that line item.
Appreciate that, Holly.
So why aren't we making the auditor pay for the legislative audit?
I don't care who pays for it. All comes out of the same money. It really does.
Makes ours look better.
I think we just move it to the auditors. Make ours look better. I like that.
Make her look like she's spending a lot.
Nope, I guess the only two other things that I will mention is for the commissioner salaries, I applied the three percent CPI. Um, but of course, the board can choose to change that now or um, we'll set that in January. But now's the time to get the right number in there so we have the right budget.
Didn't we kinda agree that we keep, be consistent with that once we got caught up? I think that's what our discussion was. Yeah.
Yeah, we spent the last few years trying to get you guys up to a reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, I think the next elected officials wage study will be next year. Um, yeah, please.
Thank you. John Moore, Pennington County HR. So the last few meetings, we've done some of the compensation presentations. The wage study request has been like on the last page and we haven't quite got there in those presentations. I really believe that we need to approve and get a wage study started for market conditions for our employee base, but a full wage analysis for all the elected positions in the county, so. I thought we'd get to it through one of the presentations. We just haven't quite got to it yet. It's it's on the bottom of the last page, I think. But that would be my recommendation.
Right.
Uh, we've been putting money away for the last couple of years, so I should have thirty thousand or possibly forty five maybe by now. I thought it was the second. I I think we have thirty thousand put away to to work towards that.
Sure.
I think, but I would really recommend that we do that. I'll make a formal request, but it's been part of that compensation deck every time we come to talk, so.
Mr. Chair. So John, you did a study, what, last year, two years ago?
Twenty eighteen and we initiated in twenty nineteen.
Counties were doing?
Oh, that's we do every year to kinda get a gauge on what's happening.
Do you remember what counties you used to compare Pennington County?
It's a s- an assortment of counties all across the the state. It's Holly's actually been the one that's pulled most of that data. The one I was involved in was data we got from Gallagher. They gathered information for us. But we didn't do a real in-depth analysis of the elected positions. We did it for all the rest. They just provided information that they had gathered from the survey participants and we had invited thirty five or forty people and I think only twenty one participated.
Didn't that go beyond the state boundaries?
Yes, we we included some folks in Colorado, Nebraska, Wyoming, um, North Dakota, Minnesota. Um, it was an assortment, so they're not all apples to apples and and even uh, the commissioners are more consistent, but the positions like auditor, treasurer, those, they vary considerably even across the state.
I guess the point that I'm making is that that twenty eight thousand a year was based on a market study. What comparable?
Oh, initially, that was based on a lot of data that Holly had gathered as well as the information.
Pulled out of there.
No, no, we had data to support those.
And I, and I remember, you know, we had some other things happen that elected official means not just us, it's all of us.
Yeah, all ten.
And some of these positions are, you know, we got, hadn't seen, you had people below you ju- that's the starting wage for a certain elected official wasn't enough to.
Make adjustments, yeah. So we reworded actually, Lloyd, thank you for that. We reworded that, um, that statement so that the commissioners would be able to set. You didn't have to always start people. Initially, the first two years I was here, you were tied by that guideline. You had to start them at the base. Now you have discretion, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you.
So do we get longevity pay?
So how many, how many? So when you, on the group insurance, considering the three employees in the office, plus any commissioners that are taking advantage of that.
I based on our, ours on actual, since we're so small that I can do that. For the new employee coming in, you know, that one's an unknown at this point, but I budget in the middle and have them at an employee plus one.
Okay. And Mr. Chair. Holly, I think travel and conferences has probably jumped up quite a bit, but you know, we got three, three in your office plus five commissioners and we're doing the W I R, Nacos and I think we're putting up cushion in there to where it's gonna work. It could be, you know, it's not just those ones. We also got the in-state conferences and this, that's gonna help cover some, some also some training for the other, well, your office.
Yeah, in the past, um, boards haven't been supportive of sending and attending like the National Association annual counties conference and, um, the last couple of years, the board has sent me to those, so that's, you know, a new expense that we haven't had in the past and more commissioners attending those as well, so.
Yeah, and you're probably looking at, are you looking at some more training for like Joan or the next person?
Joan up to the state conferences as well.
That's, that's, of course, okay. Okay. Questions on it?
Um, I guess the other thing, Deb, Commissioner Hancock, you had mentioned about the services and fees. One of the things in there is that Black Hills Council Local Governments. And we've only been with them paying dues for a few years now. But we did receive our projected fees for twenty twenty three and they are significantly higher than what I have in the budget. Um, to the tune of being almost ten thousand dollars short. Jennifer will be here tomorrow morning at about nine to talk to the board about that and and the services we're receiving from there, so.
Um, how much are we paying now and how much are they increasing?
We are paying fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And next year, it's gonna go to just shy of twenty three thousand. Um, she has indicated that in the next five years, they intend to get up to what their their dues are based on our per capita, fifty two cents per capita. And what we should be paying is almost sixty thousand. But they didn't wanna take that big of a jump in one year, so they're gonna tier it for the next five years. So I was not expecting that much of an increase. I did not budget that much.
We haven't been partners with them that long, have we?
No.
Well.
We started paying dues in two thousand nineteen is when we started back paying.
County had dropped out probably in early or mid two thousands or so.
Two thousand one.
Wasn't a, wasn't a part of it for many years. So those that that can ta- have benefits because of our membership include all of the, all the cities. Uh, and I think their rate is about half if if we're a member. Remember if that's correct, Holly, if I'm saying that right? But I think that, I think they're looking at adjusting that also so that everybody will be paying fifty two cents per capita. Will be what their, what their dues will be based on. But any sanitary district within Pennington County qualifies on any water district. Be a hundred and sixty of those. Any road district, we have a hundred and sixty of those. Uh, so there are a lot of local government entities that could request and receive assistance through the Black Hills Council.
We know how many of those entities actually have been using.
I don't. The Jennifer can provide us with. I don't know if she can right now, but she one of the things we talked about last week, I think she's the one that mentioned it, is that what maybe a county needs to be doing is, uh, charging those entities that are taking advantage of it. That there be a fee to offset the cost that's being paid by the county. Yeah, but how the, how that would work is they'd have to filter. Once they make the applications, they're a lot of them make inquiries to the Black Hills Council, but once they make the application, then a fee. Yeah.
Do they charge, they don't charge them a fee to help them?
To sit down and talk and go through it. Right, but but they may be, depending on what the project is. I mean, it may be a project where they're actually doing a contract with them. Uh, and they are paying for it.
I guess I'd have to see that and then how many people have actually, I guess, Holly, maybe you could send her email, how many entities in Pennington County have used their services?
Well, Jen, we can ask Jennifer tomorrow and she can provide that information.
I know that. I know that.
I got paperwork in my, my trunk of the entities that they're working on right now. I think it's a hundred and forty that they're working on right now, a hundred and fifty or more?
Oh, totally.
Totally.
Yeah. Not just Pennington County, but.
No.
So the city of Hill City is, um, would be on that, but with our economic development in Hill City. We, uh, went to them, and they said, no, you're, you're not covered under the city. We're, we're separate. So we did join, but, uh, not, I, I don't know if we're paying five hundred thousand dollars a year, so I don't know how they structured that, but, uh.
That'll be changed. The structure on it will be changed for them also, probably, so.
Cause one of the, I think, Gary, one of the things we discussed last week at that one was, quite frankly, you know, you're talking back in two thousand one, Pennington County dropped off, and some of the rates, a lot of people's rates, that a previous director probably negotiated.
Yeah.
The rates, instead of having a flat fee for, for everybody, negotiated, well, you could, well, yours is a thousand, but I'll do it for five, cause I don't want you to completely leave, you know, so now that's where they're, now they're at the point where that budget, and they're so busy with all the stuff that they're doing, they gotta be able to.
So I'm glad you're, I'm, I'm glad you reached out to her. She's coming tomorrow.
She'll be here tomorrow morning, for sure. Um, so tomorrow, you'll have Judge Feiflu will be here at eight-thirty. He has a trial, I believe, starting at nine. So we need to get him in and out, and then fire, EM, and Scott, and then extension and the fair, and some of the outside, uh, subsidies. So tomorrow should go pretty quick.
How, how's the mailroom going?
Mailroom is going great.
Good.
How much?
The mailroom.
Oh, mailroom.
What would you like to know?
Looking for a job.
Our new machine is not being very friendly in that it does not like to mail out license plates, so we are working with the manufacturer, trying to get that fixed before January.
Oh, man.
Um, so that's been a challenge on our new machine, but, um, but going well.
They think they can fix it?
They're promising me that they're going to.
Oh, yeah?
Otherwise, I threaten to send it back.
Oh.
Yep, cause we can't go into a plate year and not have a.
No.
Machine that'll mail them out. So they have been very responsive, I will say that, so.
What else, Holly?
What else? Same story as everybody else, having a hard time finding someone for our office. The first go around, I didn't get anybody qualified, so I re-advertised at a higher wage and did get two. Um, interviewed one yesterday, waiting for one for tomorrow morning, and if that doesn't fall through, I'll make the offer to the other. Hopefully, we can get her in here. That's what I know.
Moved recess?
Okay, no other discussion for questions of anybody? Still got John here.
Any other info that you are seeking that we didn't have in the books, or that you would like us to ask the departments for? Or that can come tomorrow as well. Just something to think about.
Okay. We got a motion. Is there a second to go to recess?
Second.
I have a second. I'll have a favor of recessing until eight-thirty AM. Anybody saying aye?
Aye.
I suppose. Motion care? So Lloyd?
What'd I do?